Good evening. I would like to call this April 16, 2024 School Board Regular Meeting to order. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional lands of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. The Pledge of Allegiance is the next item on our agenda. Colonel Alvarado, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in command, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
Colonel Cole?
Here.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple is on Zoom?
Here.
Ms. Marotti is excused. Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
The next item is our Black History Month Contest winners. The school district and the Fairbanks Chapter of the NAACP recently co-sponsored an annual Black History Month contest. Ms. Violetta Knight, NAACP Education Committee member, will present the first-place winners for this year's contest.
Okay, all right. Well, first, we want to thank the school district for partnering with us on this contest. It's something that we've done for years. And I think we had over 140 entries this year, but we could always have more. So we would love to continue this, and we're going to acknowledge our winners, our first-place winners tonight. And we will start with first place in the K-1 grade coloring pages is Daisy Nee Smith. I don't know if she's here. Okay. And Daisy attends Woodridge River Elementary. The, in the second and third grade category coloring pages is Caitlin Mingo, and she attends Denali Elementary. Okay, now wait there, okay? All right. The next person is Gunar Giagucci. I'm sure I probably tore that name up, but he, he is a, the fourth, the fifth, fourth through sixth grade art from Barnett Magnet School. And we had an awful lot of first grade, first-place winners from Ben Allison Jr. Senior High. We just happen to have one of their teachers here helping out. So Noah Reed was first place in seventh and eighth grade art. Noah? Okay, and also from Ben Allison Jr. Senior High School is Rosalyn Russell. First place in the seventh and eighth grade essay portion is Rosalind here. Okay, we'll make sure she gets her certificate. In the ninth through 12th grade art is Leo Scott from North Pole High School. Okay? And last, but certainly not least, is Abigail Plata, ninth through 12th grade essay from Ben Allison Jr. Senior High. And, okay, there you go. And we want to thank, thank all these, the students who came today and all the kids who entered the contest. The, the theme for this school year was African-Americans in the Arts. So thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is our recognition of our ESP of the Month. Fancy Connor, Arctic Light Elementary School Student Behavior Support Technician, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for April 2024. Rachel Blackwell, Arctic Light Elementary Principal, will make the presentation.
Hi, I have had the pleasure of working with Fancy Connor at Arctic Light Elementary for the last nine months since I arrived there. Fancy always puts students first. She's always willing to lend a hand wherever she's needed, and she builds strong relationships with our students and our families while also helping us maintain order at our school. Fancy is an excellent student behavior support technician, and we're really, really lucky to have her at Arctic. So thank you, Fancy. We appreciate you.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Consent items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is public comments for non-agenda, for reports and non-agenda items, including general comments, input, and suggestions. During this section of the agenda, the School Board welcomes public comments on non-agenda topics. This time is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The board will make note of the topics, though no official action will be taken. Topics may be referred to the administration for further research and future potential action. Board members will not be responding to comments or questions made by the public, but may ask questions of the speaker for clarifying purposes only. Concerned citizens should initially discuss matters with the superintendent or designee first. After the superintendent or designee has heard the concerns, then it may be brought to the board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the district office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time the item is introduced for action and/or discussion. Once the agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the School Board Office by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Those who have signed up in advance will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. Public testimony will be heard from citizens in the order in which they have signed up. A sign-up sheet is available in the boardroom prior to the start of the meeting for those who have not already signed up in advance. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide their first name, spell their last name, and state their area of residence. I will also add that this meeting is a public meeting and is broadcast on the radios across our community. Civil discourse is welcome, but it is important to keep your language and comments respectful and appropriate for this public setting. Our first person signed up for public testimony tonight is Ms. Nikki Eisman. I don't see her, but I do believe she's coming, so we will move her to the bottom if she shows up. The next is Ms. Bonnie Mund.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Mund. I'm M-U-N-D, and I live in Fairbanks. And I actually wrote something this time. I want to talk about today, I want to talk today as a parent with anxiety about the importance of inviting public engagement in a variety of ways. And I would add to continue to invite public engagement in a variety of ways. And soon after having my first child nine years ago, I stumbled across Gretchen Rubin's podcast Happier and her Four Tendencies Personality Framework. Among the myriad personality and behavior quizzes out there, this resonated with me because it gives a window into how people respond to outer and inner accountability and expectations. The four tendencies are upholders, questioners, obligers, and rebels. Upholders respond to both outer and inner expectations. Their motto is, "Discipline is my freedom." Questioners question all expectations, both inner and outer. "I'll comply if you convince me why." Obligers meet outer expectations but struggle to meet inner expectations that they impose on themselves. "You can count on me, and I'm counting on you to count on me." Rebels resist all expectations, outer and inner alike. I was pretty certain I was an obliger. I need outer accountability. I just don't always follow through with it. Well, the quiz told me, much to the surprise of nobody that is close to me, that I am a rebel. The rebel motto is, "You can't make me, and neither can I." I bring up the four tendencies because often invitations for public engagement are sort of a one-size-fits-all. While a call to action might work great for those who respond well to outer expectations, such as obligers, or another might respond or work well for those upholders who respond well to inner expectations, putting the expectations on themselves. And those who are questioners or rebels might be turned off by what seems to be a very impiting and open invitation to become involved. So I just wanted to go over, over those to just bring up the different ways that people respond to accountability and invitations in this time where I think public engagement is so crucial, and encourage you all to continue looking at different ways to include and find different, different viewpoints from the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Hansen. Oh, sorry, no, I've skipped somebody. Ms. Colleen Pickering.
My name is Colleen Pickering, P-I-C-K-E-R-I-N-G. I live in the North Pole area. First, I wanted to say thank you for serving on the school board. You're not in an easy position. I'm a retired teacher. I've done my entire teaching career under contract with this district. After my husband and I got married, he was added to my insurance policy with the required healthcare premium deductions being taken from my paycheck. Later, we discovered that an artificial hip from years previously was poisoning him with chromium and cobalt. Those items cannot be keelited out of the body. The only option is to remove the source of poison. I was still working full-time in October of 2018 when he had to go to the specialist and have that poison source removed. The district and the borough entity are self-insured with the third-party administrator for handling claims and paperwork. The Alaska Commission on Insurance through the state legislature does not have any dealings with your third-party administrator. The district is covered and/or part of the borough risk management as well as utilizing the borough attorneys. My husband was part of a class-action lawsuit against the hip manufacturer. His body, his pain and suffering, his decision. I did support that decision, hoping that no one else would have to go through the trauma of such high levels of poison. After numerous years, a small monetary settlement was finally offered in the class-action lawsuit. My husband's lawsuit attorney shared that the typical division of a monetary award is about a third to the attorney, a third to the insurance, in this case, the self-insured borough, and approximately a third to the injured party. That sounded fair. Everyone involved gets something. My husband signed that agreement. The borough refused to accept that agreement. Surprise, surprise, the lawsuit attorney later told us that the borough decided the attorney would get paid one-third of the settlement, the borough would get the rest of the settlement, and my husband, who had suffered years of poison, would get zero. If he did not consent to that, there was a threat of a lien on our home to recover the full portion that of surgery, or to recover the full cost of surgery. Bottom line, it's not about the money. We never entered into it for the money, but I worked hard. I retired with 1.3 years of sick leave, never abusing sick leave, and I'm just appalled that your attorneys moved forward with that.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you for your testimony, and if you could forward that to the board via email, I would appreciate it.
Do you want a copy of the agreement Borough required?
Just that way we have something in our emails so we can make sure we fully understand it. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Sharon Hansen.
Hi, my name is Sharon Hansen, H-A-N-S-E-N. I live in Fairbanks. For a period of time, I tried hiding that I was left-handed by writing with my right hand. I was scolded for poor handwriting and found it really exhausting after a while. Before being diagnosed left-handed, I thought that I couldn't cut with a pair of scissors. Now that I know I'm left-handed, I use left-handed scissors and can cut quite well and don't feel bad about myself anymore. No amount of modifying my diet or supplements or removing food dye is going to make me right-handed. I didn't choose to be left-handed. I was born that way. Being right-handed isn't better. It's just different than being left-handed. Although most things in the world are set up for right-handed people because there are more right-handed people than left-handed people in the world. So are you thinking to yourself, "What is the point in this woman telling me she's left-handed?" Pretty weird, huh? April is Autism Awareness Month. I have several folks, I have several autistic folks in my life, and I'm here to not only say that I'm aware of autism, but that I fully accept autism in the same way that I accept I am left-handed. Some refer to this as a disability. I think of it as a super ability. Some traits that autistic people may share are exceptional attention to detail, excellent memory skills, strong logical and analytical thinking, intense focus and determination, enhanced pattern recognition, enhanced creativity, and, my favorite, honest and direct communication. I once asked an autistic person who is very close to me, "Does my butt look big in these jeans?" His response was a simple yes, to which I was appalled. And then he responded with, "Then why did you ask if you didn't want an honest and direct answer?" I now unequivocally rely on him to tell me the truth, no matter what question I ask. He cannot lie. Especially in the formative years, in a classroom setting, it can be especially difficult for young autistic students to navigate social nuances. Learning all the things with growing up is hard. Throw in all of those extra synapses, and it makes it even more challenging. As a parent, you want your student to be challenged, as that leads to personal growth, but you also want them to be successful and feel good about themselves and their abilities. So I thank all the teachers and members of the school district for accepting and accommodating autistic students. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have on Zoom Ms. April Smith.
Hello, my name is April Smith, S-M-I-T-H, and I live in North Pole. First, let me say how disgusted and disappointed, but not surprised, I am in your I am in your board decision to gloss over Ms. Hardy's slanderous behavior. I could have written that little speech Mr. Dorian gave, word for word, based solely on my knowledge of each of you and your weak leadership, lack of desire for personal accountability, and love of wishy-washy crap. You are all so predictably weak and spineless. Next, I want to let you know, I listened to the meeting last night and wanted to give you a few pointers. I may not have two master's degrees, but I know how to read and understand my vocabulary words. And race is not the same as ethnicity. Those words are not interchangeable. Race refers to dividing people into groups based on their physical appearance, while ethnicity refers to the identification of people from different geographic regions, including their religion, language, and other customs. The time you wasted on this last night was laughable. And that was just one example of the excruciating junkie debate last night. Stop trying to compete for who can be the literal most woke board member and try focusing on your real problems. Next, I see you're bringing in a company to guide your strategic planning. I'm thankful for that because, see my last comment, for one of a million reasons, you should not be left to your own devices to do that work. It looks like there will be a focus on facilities use, AKA closing schools. And I sincerely hope that you listen and make responsible decisions about our district's financial future during this process. I hope you grow up and lead and stop bowing to the gods of your leftist peers who love to waste other people's money and cry over mascots and trails. Finally, I wanted to remind you that the administration, I wanted to remind the administration and you that you're walking a fine line with your propaganda on the May 7 vote. I forwarded some of the emails and Facebook posts to APOC because they are misleading and steering voters. And they are using government resources, like your email list and Facebook contacts, to try to sway the election, which is clearly illegal. As always, I'm watching you. And since I have time, I also want to add that I expect and demand you use your position and lobby efforts to defend and protect the 1,000 homeschool students' rights to a personalized education in the least restrictive environment, their homes. Fight for all students in the district, not just the ones who submit to your idea of what education should be. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Rita Trometer.
Rita Trometer, T-R-O-M-E-T-T-E-R, and I am from North Pole. This evening, I am here to make each of you aware of the inability to perform the duties that you were elected for. A few weeks ago, Brandy Hardy, president, spoke out on false allegations about her legislators. It was a great criticized tactic with her full theatrical performance, not sure if it was to show power of position or media presentation. No matter the reason, it was not suitable or proper conduct as a school board president who is representing our community. But after the executive meeting, she should have been removed from her perch. But you, as board members, allowed Ms. Harding to remain on her bully pulpit. Ms. Hardy is a great model for our students to do as they please, and none of them should ever be disciplined of poor behavior. Brandy Harding is a deplorable example of the president, and as a group of each of you fall behind her. If no board members can acknowledge her inability to perform her duties, then I can assume none of you should be on the board either and capable of your current position. Children learn and watch leaders for manners as they grow. Ms. Harding is a wonderful example of how an educator can degrade others. When the adult is in charge with no discipline, then the student should never get a reprimand from their personal actions on school grounds from this board. And if this was not a performance or a media stunt by Ms. Harding, then I can only assume that she needs medical attention or psychiatric therapy. Once again, someone in this condition should not be in her position. Then last week, our school superintendent, Mr. Mayon, overstepped his bounds by sending an email from the office to the teachers and parents to engage in a scheduled walkout in support of the May 7, yes, vote. In his position, he should never ask teachers, parents, and students to join in on a political stunt to enhance his limelight of his position. It is not the job of the superintendent of schools to be a political activist. So as of this evening, I am asking both Ms. Harding as president and Mr. Mayon as superintendent to resign themselves from their positions to save our students and community from more damage.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Denise Templeton.
This is my first time ever testifying, so I'm a little nervous. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Can you, sorry, state your first name, spell your last name, and give your area of residence? You're doing great.
My name's Denise Templeton, and I am a North Pole resident. I just want to point out, and many of us already know, that Alaska schools rank number 49th in the nation. More than half of Alaska public schools have failed to meet grade-level standards for math, English, and science. Our K through 3 graders are not reading the very fundamental skill needed to function in getting a job and ultimately, you know, function in society. You have to read. Porn books can be found in the halls, classrooms, and libraries of our high school in the public schools. This is testimony from high school students. What is almost worse, Alaska high school students in 11th and 12th grade are now reading books that are anti-men, anti-American, anti-white, and anti-Christian. My point is, our public schools are at an apex of detriment, while our school board president has made accusations that she later stated were just rumors. She made statements that congressmen of Alaska and our community were taking so-called bribes to vote no on SB 140's bill of education funding. These congressmen are elected members of our community. This action was so irresponsible and unbecoming of a school board president and member that I came down here for the first time to testify. Brandy Hardy should be an example to the community, and especially to the students of North Starborough School District. Each elected official needs to do their part to make our community safe, economically sound, and our children's educational future bright. She has failed our community and children in this regard. If a house is divided against itself, that house cannot stand. That's Mark 325. Please remove her from her position as school board president and as a member of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Nikki Eisman.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. It is indeed a pleasure to see all of you. Nikki Eisman, E-I-S-E-M-A-N, Old Main Anna Highway. Taking out my cough drop. Good evening. My name is Nikki Eisman, and I'm the deputy treasurer of Friends of Fairbanks Schools for Prop A, doing business as Golden Heart Strong, and formed with the sole purpose of seeking passage of Prop A in the May 7 special election. The state of Alaska is strangling our schools by not providing adequate sustainable funding. It's time to take responsibility locally by restoring the tax revenue cap to 2022 levels through a yes vote on Proposition A. Strong schools provide an educated workforce. Strong schools attract and retain local businesses. Strong schools attract and retain military families. Strong schools attract and retain new families to our community and attract and retain much-needed qualified professionals because strong schools create a strong community with a strong economy. We've had several pop-up events where we've had the opportunity to talk with community members about our current funding situation. Seems to be fairly common knowledge that the state has provided flat funding since 2017. People are aware that SB 140 passed with its increase to the BSA and was then vetoed by the governor and not overridden. They're grateful that the Borough Assembly, through Proposition A, is providing borough residents with the opportunity to devote, to vote on additional funding to our schools by restoring what was cut in last year's Borough Assembly budget. There are naysayers, and I'd like to take a moment to address just one of the concerns. In a letter to the editor in yesterday's news minor, readers were urged to vote no on Prop A and instead to wait to see what the legislature would do. This is exactly what got us into this mess to begin with. Last year's assembly put us all its funding eggs in the state's basket, assured that they would fund us. When that funding was ultimately denied by the governor's veto, the district and borough had to do, you know, scramble to make a workable budget. We look to be on a similar path this year. This was driven home to me this morning as I listened to an interview with the governor on Talk of Alaska. He shared that he felt that a funding compromise could be reached that met both his goals for education and the legislators, and then added, and I quote, "We may not get there this year." Fairbanks, we have the opportunity to take care of ourselves, to do what we always do, to pull each other out of the ditch, to bring each other cookies when somebody is sick, and to take care of our schools and our town. I urge a yes vote. And for anyone who's interested, to go to our website, goldenheartstrong.com. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Ruth Ewig.
Hello, everyone. I'm a retired school teacher. I started here in 1973 in, at Old Main, teaching math and sci, or math, high school and junior high math. And at that time, math wasn't racist. It was amazing, the being able to teach it and have it not be racist. The reason I sent you, God grants the rights. I sent you that in your email. Anybody else who would like to have it, you're welcome. Somehow, at some point, and it wasn't you, by the way, people got mixed up and thought that the government is in charge. But the government isn't in charge. We, the people, are in charge, and that's why this was written. So study it. Probably none of you ever have heard this in civics. I don't even think I had civics. The other thing is, I have a job for you to do in your policy book to put in there a definition of parental rights. Okay, I have these papers, and I would like Carmen, if you would, sorry, to give these out to everyone and study what a parent's rights are in a school because we're having trouble with that. We're having trouble with NEA Union, the Alaska Library Association, and the pro-abortionists are saying parents do not have a right to govern their children, their minor children. So if I could give this to Carmen after or whenever to hand out to everyone. The next item I have on here is, I had, there's a list of bad books, and these books are in the schools. Now, why these books are in the schools is a big question, okay? The, first of all, the North Starborough citizen, I'm from Moms for Liberty, and we have come together because we need parents' rights, and it's not happening by itself. With all that is going on in our country, there is cause for concern. More than half of Alaska public schools failed to meet grade-level standards in math, English, and science, according to the Anchorage Daily News. The nation's report card places Alaska 49th in the nation. Forty-ninth. Students reporting that, are reporting that marijuana is easy to get and is being smoked in the bathrooms at our junior and senior high schools. Porn books are in our classrooms and our libraries. The required reading list for 11th and 12th graders is completely woke. The books are as follows. Anti-white, 26 books. How many of you are whites? Because these are anti-white. Anti-Christian, 11 books. How many people are Christians? These are anti-Christian.
I'm sorry, that's time.
Excuse me.
No, it's okay. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Mr. John Ewig.
Hello, my name is John Ewig, and my last name is E-W-I-G. I apologize ahead of time. It seems to be in vogue to apologize for taking your time. I'd like to point out that I'm a passionate advocate for public education. Quote that. The other quote is, "My only agenda is for Fairbanks to have the best education system we possibly can." That said, I might add that the Fairbanks system is without substance, devoid of any meaningful educational value. Research shows that Alaska is rated 49th in the nation. Do you realize if this school system were closed down, our students could still rank last in the nation? Isn't that a neat thing to think about? What do we hear? "We need more money." In the late 80s and early 90s, I wasted several years of my life trying to get the school board there then to adopt a comprehensive reading program. Reading skills in the schools were alarming. Fast forward 34 years, and we hear children can't read. What's the mantra? "We need more money." There seems to be a lot of money in failure. Remember, quote, "My only agenda is for Fairbanks to have the best education system we possibly can." At 49th in the nation, this school board must be proud.
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes people who have signed up in advance. We do have a little bit of time left in the hour. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? You can just come up. Please state your first name, spell your last name, and give your general area of residence.
Okay. My first name is Violetta. My last name is Knight, K-N-I-G-H-T. I didn't plan to testify tonight, but I'm going to. I've lived in Fairbanks for 42 years. Both my adult children, ages 37 and 32, went through the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. One has her master's in community mental health from UAF. Another one has a bachelor in Japanese studies. They are products of this school district. We also have a granddaughter who started kindergarten last year at Anne Wayne, not reading. By the time she finished kindergarten, she was reading, and her teacher was using phonics and sound blends. These kids are learning in this district. And it's very disturbing when people who never have had kids in public school have so much to say about public school that's negative. If you have kids in school and you're involved with them, you will see what's going on. I did PTA and volunteered in schools all the time my kids were there. If there was an issue that came up, as a parent, I addressed it with either the teacher or the principal. So to say that parents have no rights is an outright lie because they do. And I remember even opting my kids out of the sex ed thing. And I remember opting my kid out of one of the movies they wanted to watch. And there was a form for that. So to say that that's, parents have no rights, is not true because we have grandkids in the school system now. I volunteer at their school. I know what's going on. And the other thing I want to say- And the other thing I want to say is that, as a Christian member of the Fairbanks community, I acknowledge that whether you're a school board president or a local legislator, we are all human. We all make mistakes. And if we want to quote the Bible, I have a verse to quote, "Forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors." Brandy Hardy, our school board president, was born and raised here in Fairbanks. She's from a strong family. She cares about this school district, and she cares about this community. And I know her and her family. She's from a very good family, and her husband is a military person. She knows the different aspects of being part of an education community and being part of Fairbanks. And I know her personally, and I appreciate her leadership. And if we call ourselves Christians, one of the first things that Jesus told us to do was to figure out. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Janet Farris, the Fort Wayne Rite School Liaison Officer, F-A-R-R-I-S. I would like to provide you three quotes from the Department of Defense about military-connected students, children in youth. The Department of Defense celebrates military children during the month of April. There are more than 1.6 million military children who face many challenges and unique experiences as a result of their parents' service. Many times, they do not have choices of where they are moving, what type of education they will receive, what is available for them as they move to that area. While military members serve around the world, we often forget the challenges faced by these children. Military families move, on the average of every two to three years, impacting these lives through changes in schools and support networks. Many move about 12 times within their school careers. And last, each year, the Department of Defense joins national, state, and local government schools, military services organizations, companies, and private citizens in celebrating military children and the sacrifices they make. And because of these three facts, I would like to invite all of you in the entire borough to April 27th at Pioneer Park Centennial Center, as we have two very special events happening that day. From 10 to 11, we are recognizing schools across Alaska who support military children in a very special way. And a little side note on that, there are 11 winners, and they are all from this area. After that, from 11 to 3, we have the A Day in the Life Steam Ahead Activity Fair in honor of these military-connected children in youth. But everybody is welcome to come and participate, to go to the activity fairs, visit the vendors. We have food trucks, we have static displays, we have presentations. So, come on out. Celebrate these children in youth with us, and everybody's always welcome in the military community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm trying not to go too long. Richide, E-I-D-E, North Pole. My friends were out here two weeks ago waving signs. I couldn't do that. I didn't write letters to the board regarding this huge controversy. I didn't want to feel, I felt like I was ganging up on the board and people in particular. I've known Frank Tomacheski and Harmony and their five kids for 16 years, and they are very stand-up people, hard-working entrepreneurs. And so, it came pretty close to home when they were ragged on. But when the board ended up, two weeks ago, moving us out of here, going into executive session, and coming up with the result that you did where basically it was a nothing burger, you're gonna double down, and things like, we all make mistakes, we all share the responsibility. Okay. It clarified what we're dealing with. I'll just close by saying you've lost all credibility to correct people who speak truthfully about the problems in our schools in the future, even if you don't like it. Credibility's gone. It's gonna take a while to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room? Come on up.
My name is Gail McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E, and I live in Fairbanks. And as we've heard and as I've spoken prior, I'm very, very concerned about many of the things that are going on in our school district. I currently don't have children in the district. I've had grandchildren, excuse me, that have come up through the system in not many years past, and they have also told me of the things that are going on in these schools. So, the things that are reported, the porn, the drugs, those things, the bullying, are real. And I am extremely concerned, especially about these books in the libraries. Every time I hear another video from across the country of someone coming to a school board meeting in their town and reading from one of these books, which I know that the mic would be shut off immediately if I were to come and do that, because they cannot go across the airwaves, you would not listen to them. And frankly, I wouldn't be able to say and read aloud the things that I hear. Recently, this happened, and I went to the library search. That book is in Lathrop. And I plan to begin to do something about this, but I'm extremely disappointed that this is allowed. And like I said the last time I spoke, that what we're given as parental rights is to tell our children, "Don't check the porn out." I can't wrap my mind around what kind of thinking that is, that it is provided. And I don't know if you've seen any of these books. If you haven't, then that's even more disappointing to me, that you have not looked at them. And possibly I can get some of this information to you, and you can look, because I can't believe that any one of you could look me in the eye and tell me that you approve that kind of information. Laws have had to be changed so that schools could provide that kind of material, because it is illegal to give that kind of explicit sexual material to minors. And I'm just appalled, but hopefully, we can do something about it.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, oh, go ahead.
My name is Erin Janoso, J-A-N-O-S-O. I live in Fairbanks. And usually, when I'm going to testify here in an evening, I spend gargantuan amounts of time preparing testimony, and I haven't done none of that tonight. But I just wanted to speak in support of the teachers and the folk, everyone involved with trying their very hardest to give our kids a positive experience in what is an absolutely, you know, crushing experience as they're squeezed tighter and tighter by the situation that exists with the budget right now. I listen to the negative testimony and just feel, without even hearing about whether they're in the schools or have kids in the schools, but it just makes my heart say that they can't have been, because if they were, they would see the impacts that are happening there to the programs and to the children that are there every day, experiencing and dealing with the consequences of the lack of funding, the flat funding for years and years and years that goes on and on and on. I've heard teachers in this past week describe it as crushing, use words like dying or dying over here. I spent my morning, this morning, at West Valley in the band room, and it's the best fun in the world, and the kids there are just such an inspiration and a joy to me in getting to play music with them, is that also. But the other thing I can see is a symphonic band without trumpets. That's why I was there. That's where we are. We are cutting into the very depths of the guts of all the programs that this community cares the most about, and that is the consequence of this bizarre and crazy funding situation that we find ourselves in. And if we want to tell ourselves that it doesn't matter, and we want to tell ourselves stories that are not involved with actually what's going on in these schools, and we can certainly do that, but you could also go and spend hours, spend the time educating yourself about what's actually happening there, and you would change your mind. And you should do it. Challenge yourself that way, because it's really hard to see, and it's affecting our teachers. It affects teacher retention, and we are losing more and more and more. And even if we had funding without those folks and the support that they deserve and need, we can't do education for our kids. So, Fairbanks isn't a tropical island. It's cold, and we need to keep our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room?
My name is Ella Cotter, and I'm from North Pole. And I didn't come prepared to say anything, but I just want to say that an unstable man is unstable in all his ways, is what the Bible says. And also, when Jesus was in the temple, he overthrew the tables of the money changers because they had made his house the house of thieves. So, I've been in Fairbanks for 50 years, and I am totally appalled with the school district. I have three children. One of them went through public school, and that was my youngest. And I have to say that she's a very smart girl, and I thank God for getting her through without any influence from you, because I don't trust you. Nobody in this community trusts the government anymore, and I know why, because you have put God out of everything. He is not in our schools, and that is the downfall. And until he comes back in, it will continue to go down to where it belongs, and you all know where that is.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. The next item on our agenda is our Borough Assembly Report. Savannah Fletcher, Presiding Officer of the Borough Assembly, will provide the Assembly Report. Is she online? We will shift just a little bit, as long as board members are okay, till we can connect with Ms. Fletcher, and we will move on to Advisory Members Reports and Comments.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was dealing with a child. I have unmuted now, but I apologize. If you want to move on.
You're okay, Ms. Fletcher. I think you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, School Board. Thanks again for your patience. As you know, having kids takes some, doing two things at once sometimes, but I just want to give a quick update on what's been going on at the Borough Assembly. We, as you know, are in the middle of our budget session, and we are getting a report on the school board's budget this upcoming Thursday, and I hope folks will feel free to attend and help answer questions or hear what we're curious about. Superintendent Minor will be taking the lead, of course. And then we have an all-day budget session on Saturday, and that's when we'll really be making our main amendments to the budget prior to actually voting on it in May. And I'm happy to email you all a copy. We have on our Borough Budget website a detailed schedule of the different days for public comment. We are scheduling it a bit later than usual this year, because we want to have the special election on May 7th related to education funding occur prior to public comment, so that the public knows what fiscal situation we're working with before we make those final votes and before we hear priorities from folks in terms of what they want to see in the budget. Otherwise, outside of budget, things going on right now, we, I think since we last heard from you guys, we might have already approved our increase to our tobacco excise tax. That was motivated in part with an effort to reduce youth use of tobacco and vaping products, and so data from the school district was really helpful in showing us the problem right now, and I hope in a year, two years, we can start to see that data trend downward and we see reduced use of those products by youth in our community. The other thing I want to flag, just for those listening and for the school board, we've also approved the Health and Social Services Commission, starting to create a program to award our opioid substance, the litigation settlement funds, in terms of where we'll distribute them in the community and to what different programs. And we have two vacancies on that commission, the Health and Social Services Commission. So, if you know of someone who is invested in addressing our opioid epidemic in the community and wants to have a voice in where those funds would be the most used, please encourage them to apply. It's just a one-page application you can find on the Borough website at our Health and Social Services Commission page, and it'd be great to get those two vacant seats filled. Otherwise, that's it for the highlights. Plenty more, if you want to ask questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher, for being with us tonight. Quick question, am I correct that the minimum contribution, the ordinance regarding the minimum contribution for education will be coming up in another week or so?
So, that actually passed just this last week. It was on the consent agenda, so it's fair if it passed your notice. We approved that last week, and it was at $54 million, so just reflecting what Mayor Ward has in his budget and ensuring that, of course, that'll be the minimum. I will say, obviously, the body hasn't voted on it yet, but I anticipate that going above that number significantly, based on conversations we've been having at finance meetings.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I did just want to ask that you please do forward us those public comment times, so we have that information to provide to the community.
Perfect, I will do that.
Awesome. Thank you so much for providing your report tonight.
Yeah, thanks for your patience. Have a great night.
Now, the next item on our agenda is our Advisory Members Reports and Comments. Whoever wants to go first? That looks like Colonel Cole.
Yeah, I'll go. So, you know, following Ms. Janet Farris, I wanted to extend my deepest gratitude to the administrators and teachers of the Fairbanks North Starborough School District for their exceptional recognition of the month of military child this month. This acknowledgement not only honors the resilience and strength of our military children, but also reinforces the bridge between our military and educational communities. The dedication shown by our The dedication shown by our educators in supporting these young individuals is pivotal. It reflects our shared commitment to nurturing an environment where every child can thrive, despite the unique challenges they do face due to military commitments of, you know, their parents and guardians. So on behalf of all the families of Fort Wayne Wright, thank you for your unwavering support and for acknowledging the significant role our children play and the strength of our military community. Thank you.
Colonel Alvarado.
Good evening, and again, I'd like to echo what Colonel Cole said regarding the thankfulness for the support for the Month of the Military Child. Ms. Ferris did a really good job really talking about the number of moves. And one of those things that makes the difference between when people move and the ease of moving into it is really the way we are embraced by the community. So again, while a lot of kids probably didn't imagine they were ever going to live in Alaska and probably didn't have a choice in it, the fact is, it's things like this that really help us out. Obviously, moving topics. We understand it was very difficult decisions to shut down Ben Ileson, as well as any other school. And I'm very careful to say I'm not suggesting that military child tears are more precious than anybody else because we understand that for every school that's closed, you know, that does represent an amount of heartache. However, I do appreciate and I do want to express on behalf of Ileson Air Force Base, the work that has been done to try to do the best we can to ease the transition from Ben Ileson to North Pole. We know it's going to be difficult, and we know not everybody's going to be happy, but we look forward to continuing this partnership. And while the school does represent a little bit of a hit, it does not change the fact that we're so reiterated to the commitment of the growing community, and we are going to continue to be a part of this community. And it's going to mean some of the good times and some of the bad times as well. So again, we thank you for the support. We thank you for the dedication, and we look forward to the continued partnership. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lopez.
On Monday, April 15th, Ben Ileson had a combined assembly with Aces or Anderson Crawford Elementary. And we had students come together to celebrate Month of Military Child, where we all wore purple up to support the children. The assembly consisted of student speakers, discussion on what it actually means to be a military child, and one of the largest Macarena performances I have seen. So it's very interesting. Other items happening in the state is this weekend, our Student Council State Conference is being held at Barrow High School in UTAVIC. It will consist of members throughout the state, and will be from April 18th to April 21st. Also, April 27th is the Purple Up Assembly for the Fairbanks area, and will be held at Pioneer Park at 10:00 a.m., where the 2024 to 2027 cohort of schools will be announced. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next item is our Board Committee Reports. Is there anyone who would like to? Ms. Burnett.
Not much to report, as we did cancel our last parental engagement meeting. But our next one will be coming up on the 24th, right here at 5:30.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee met last week, I believe, and voted on a memo to the Board recommending the approval of science curriculum, so that should be coming. We have another meeting, I think our last of the year, this Thursday, the 18th. So I am hoping that we have good attendance there because we have other items to vote on, other curriculum, including CTE curriculum and, sorry, I don't have the list in front of me at the moment, but there's a few things on the agenda. So anyone who's interested in commenting or observing that meeting, again, it's Thursday. We won't, sorry, to clarify, there's not a public hearing, but you can email us, email me, and I'll make sure that the committee hears any, anything that is sent in. And that's it.
Did Ms. Maple have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, then, is the President's Report. Kind of double-dipping for boards, I am also on the Board of Kids Voting. Kids Voting sticker contest is currently live. There are entry forms available on the back table. Entries are due April 26th. This is a new event for Kids Voting where students are asked to design an "I Voted" sticker. The only requirement is that it fits within a five-inch circle and that it says "I Voted." Grade-level winners will receive $100, and their sticker will be printed and used during the fall elections, when Kids Voting hosts those in our schools. Strategic planning. During this year's budget process, the community asked the Board to give them time to be thoughtful and deliberate about the changes, the changes that need to be made in our school district's programs. The strategic plan is our vehicle to accomplish that. The process begins tonight and will be ongoing throughout the next year. This process will only be successful through robust community participation. We need everyone to stay engaged like they have been and encourage others to do the same. While there are many things outside our control, the strategic planning process is something we, as a Fairbanks community, can take ownership of and use to help shape the educational landscape of Fairbanks for the next five years and beyond. This Thursday at 5:30, in the Borough Assembly chambers, Dr. Minor, Mr. DeGraw, and myself are set to present the school district's recommended budget to the Borough Assembly Finance Committee. The recommended budget calls for a local contribution of $64 million. This year's ask is $10 million more than what was provided to the district last year as a local contribution, when you include the $4 million in one-time untaxed for supplemental funds passed by the Assembly after the final approved budget process and given in response to the Governor's veto of half of the one-time education funding passed by the legislature at the end of the 2023 legislative session. If that last sentence seems overly complex and confusing, my apologies. However, it is quite illustrative of just how complicated and unreliable education funding for our local schools has become in the last several years. Our students, educators, and families deserve well-funded public schools and dependable, consistent forward funding. This statement is true for students attending neighborhood schools, charter schools, and correspondence schools alike. Our community deserves to get off this merry-go-round. While the School Board is committed to strategic planning to help us off this ride, unless those efforts are matched by the two funding sources we have, we're limited in our ability to stabilize our own situation and get back on solid ground. Please continue to stay engaged and advocate for a permanent increase in the BSA this legislative session and for increased funding from our local Borough Assembly. The next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Thank you, President Hardy. I would like to continue the echoes of recognizing the Month of the Military Child. Arctic Light Elementary and Ben Ileson Anderson Crawford had two amazing celebrations yesterday. And so thank you to the staff members that put those on to honor the sacrifices our students make and just recognize how incredibly resilient they are. Would also like to thank Mr. Lopez, our student rep, for helping put on Ben Ileson's assembly. It was great to see him in action out at Ileson and be surrounded by all of the military-connected students there. As Mr. Lopez mentioned, please come to Pioneer Park on April 27th at 10:00 a.m., where we'll be honoring new Purple Star schools. Fairbanks does have the most Purple Star schools in Alaska. And it's super exciting that we're going to have more. These schools have gone through a rigorous application process to become Purple Star schools. And so just thankful for the work that we do to help our military-connected students be successful. Also, please wear purple in support of our military-connected students this Friday. I'd like to congratulate Principal Dershen, who is currently the principal at Randy Smith Middle School and is transitioning over to Hutchinson High School next year. Mr. Dershen has been selected as Alaska's Principal of the Year, so a great honor to have Alaska's Principal of the Year right here in Fairbanks. Principal Dershen has served as a principal in the district since 2011. And when it comes to leadership at Randy Smith Middle School, Principal Dershen says, "I've always been an educator who believes in building genuine relationships with students while maintaining high expectations for all," and he certainly does that on a regular basis. I'd like to highlight a jumpstart music camp for incoming sixth graders. Registration is out, so students interested in learning an instrument can participate in a free summer music camp. Sixth grades, sixth-grade students will get a jumpstart on understanding instrument fundamentals, care, and playing. Preference is given to students who have not had band or orchestra experience. Instruments will be provided to students who register by May 1st, 2024. And we do have a slide on the website highlighting that. And I would like to thank Design Alaska, Phyllis Pendergrass, Fairbanks Nissan, and Fairbanks Arts Association for sponsoring that effort. As you've heard from President Hardy, we will hear a report this evening on strategic planning. And welcome any comments and questions from the Board around that. On April 12th, an Alaska Superior, on April 12th, an Alaska Superior Court judge ruled Alaska statutes 1403-300 through 310 struck down as in violation of the Alaska Constitution. The ruling creates uncertainty for almost 1,000 public school students enrolled in BEST in our Fairbanks North Star Borough School District and up to 25, or, excuse me, 24,000 students statewide. While we anticipated there might be some potential changes in partnering with dual-enrolled students coming out of this decision, the decision does seem overly broad. And at this time, the court order is not a final judgment, which means it does not have any immediate impact on our district. Commissioner Bishop, our Education Commissioner of the State, stated in a letter to superintendents this morning that our school district may continue to administer its correspondence study program, including paying outages, invoices, and other administrative duties at the present. I will keep the Board and community updated as we learn more as it progresses. I would like to congratulate all of our students and staff that just completed STAR testing. I know how hard each of you worked to do your very best. STAR results from the 2023 administration, so last spring, should be in Power School very soon, and we'll be receiving data that I can provide reports to the Board. And we'll have Ellis in front of the Board to do some analysis for you soon. I have heard a lot tonight about folks talking about Alaska being ranked 49th in the state. While that might be true statewide, that is not an accurate representation of the education and achievement levels of students in Fairbanks. The 49th in the country figures comes from a ranking of states on the NAEP exam for fourth-grade students. What is challenging about NAEP scores is that they are not disaggregated for individual districts. Districts, urban and rural, are lumped together to get this ranking, and there is a large difference in achievement levels between many of our rural and urban districts, and this is certainly true for Fairbanks. What we do know is when you compare test scores that are actually comparable district to district nationwide, such as NWEA MAP testing, our students score right around the national average, which is far from the 49th ranking people are citing this evening. Additionally, our students are more than test scores, and I'm so proud of the accomplishments they're making day in and day out and the positive impacts they're having on our community upon graduation. Couple other topics from public testimony that I would like to comment on. Parental rights. We do have a parental rights involvement policy. It is BP 126, and this is in line with state statute. And if members of the public have concerns about library materials, there is an AR that clearly outlines the process to challenge our library materials, and that is AR 922. Lastly, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, or, excuse me, lastly, the Fairbanks North Star Borough is holding a special election on Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, to vote on potentially increasing funding for public education. As to the APOC concern stated earlier in the meeting, the district does have the right to share information about the election and the possible impacts of a yes or no vote, which is what my informational email to parents provided. To be, to clear the record, I did not advocate for a walkout, as mentioned in testimony this evening. With that said, I do support First Amendment rights of our students, staff, and community members, and greatly appreciate all those who support schools. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions from the Board.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you for that report tonight, covered many bases. One, in terms of the recent court decision, and I know it's very early, that was only regarding correspondence schools. It was, oh, it came out a few days ago, and everyone's trying to figure it out, and it's got a ways to go. But is that something that, as we move forward, we should at least have on our radar regarding budget? Potential budget impacts, or if you could address that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly important to keep our eye on. We, as I said, BEST Homeschool has almost 1,000 students in it now. It's our largest school in the district. And so any kind of different ruling that changes the way that we can provide education for our correspondence students is definitely something to have our eye on. And certainly, if there's changes to the way that we structure allotments or individual education plans. And so I'll be sure to be following that closely and provide the Board and the community updates as we have them. You know, the most recent information coming out of the state, it looks like things might not progress quickly on that, so it might not be an FY25 budget issue. It might be a FY26. But we'll have to wait to see how the state progresses in terms of either filing an appeal or if there's some kind of legislative fix to the ruling that was just made.
Another question?
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
And through the chair, to the administration. I'm looking forward to seeing the 2023 Alaska Star results come out. And that we'll be getting a report on that, as they do. With that, and you're mentioning NAEP and the ranking of Alaska's 49th. Appreciate some of your clarification there. That might be something that'd be worth including in that because I think a lot of people don't realize that NAEP, since its inception, has never managed to have a proficient score. We don't get any information, as you mentioned. Also, that we were ranked 49 there, NAEP has said there is no statistical difference for a group of 10 states. So we're, it's a very, very small band. And I think on a better understanding, if we could perhaps have that and maybe linked with that, that there are many measures of student achievement that I think we have some information on, and Ellis may have some insights to share and probably put that together. The last thing is that notable that the Commissioner at a recent State Board meeting said that only 29% of students could score proficient on our state test. So that, that's the only percentage that could possibly score that. It's kind of an interesting observation. So I think I look forward to that presentation and giving us better understanding of the big picture.
Mr. Lopez.
I just wanted to clarify something that was said about the walkout. I know Dr. Minor mentioned this. I believe someone stated that the walkout was intended for the special election on the 7th. That was not the case. The walkout was actually intended for the failure to education funding in Gino, so just to clarify. And that was fully endorsed by the students. That was not done by any of the staff. That was fully endorsed by students throughout the state. So just wanted to clarify that.
Seeing no further questions from the Board. The next item on our agenda is the approval of non-represented employee group step and movement increases. May I have a motion?
Move to authorize the non-represented employee group step movement for eligible employees for the 2024-2025 employment contract, 3% salary increase, and the recommended modifications.
Second.
At this time, I will open public comments. We did not have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone wishing to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comments. And I will neglect it to read the public content thing. If that changes anyone's mind, I will reopen public comment. The Board has approved a salary table for the non-represented employee group for established steps. Steps may only be authorized by Board action. The Superintendent is recommending the Board authorize the non-represented employee group step movement for eligible employees for the 2024-2025 employment contract and a 3% salary increase. Is there a presentation?
There's not a presentation, but I do have a couple words to speak to, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Minor.
It is my recommendation to the Board that you approve a salary increase for a non-rep employee group. employee group. This group, whose salaries have stagnated over time, the group earns less per day than our principals and teachers, and it's a very difficult group to recruit for and retain, given how much more many of these individuals in the group could make in the private sector. The board did budget for this increase in their recommended budget, and I'm hopeful that you'll be supportive of that tonight.
Is there any board comment on this item? Mr. Doran?
One question to the administration, and then a comment. It references modifications, anything significant, or are they just small technical things?
Small technical things, no major modifications to the contract language.
Thank you. And if I can comment? Okay, I'm in supportive of this. I think, as was mentioned, it is hard these days to get educators into the career. We have vacancies. It's, this is also a national issue, and the importance of being competitive. And this is not a generous type of thing. It is also in keeping with other bargaining contracts that we have. And I think it's really important that all our groups took a 0%, not too long ago, and minimal increases. And so, I think to be competitive, to make sure that we're attractive as a district, not only for retaining people, but recruiting people into education. We want to see young people in education, and we've got to make moves in that direction. So I'm glad with the administration for bringing this forward, and I'll be glad to support it.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, President Hardy. I struggled with this one. I won't lie. I'm trying to give raises in a budget situation like ours. It's not something I'm necessarily ever going to be in favor of. But this group of employees, one, is amazing. And two, we sit here and we talk about, we need to do this, like Mr. Doran just said, we need to support this, we need to support that, we need to invest in our teachers, and we need to invest in our staff, teacher retention, and things like that. And then we sit there and say, but don't do this. So I'm going to support these increases because we need to invest in our staff, we need to invest in our teachers, we need to invest in our employees. And so, I will support it.
Mr. Burgess?
I wanted to speak in support of this as well. I think Mr. Doran said it all, so I won't belabor the points. But I just want to say that our support staff are valuable, they are essential staff, and many of them, it is my understanding, a majority of them work second or third jobs because of the low pay that they have. And so, this is kind of a no-brainer for me. Despite the budget situation, we need to pay people what they're worth in order to recruit and retain. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, just for clarification, it's not a support staff increase.
This is our nonrepresented staff.
Apologies, apologies. Let me rephrase. Our nonrepresented employees are valuable and very much appreciated. And I retract what I said about the second job, but I like these guys, too. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for pointing that out. I was on it. I certainly support this regardless. This group is also essential and makes our district run. So thank you, and apologize for my misstatement there.
So was Ms. Maple wanting to speak? So I will put myself in the queue. I would also like to speak in support of this motion. Our nonrepresented staff works tirelessly, both those that sit over and provide administrative support, but our nonrepresented staff is even wider and bigger than that. Some of these individuals are student support, no, it's SSM, student support managers. And other, we have health aides, I believe, are also underneath there. It is a wide net. It's anyone that's not represented through our teachers, so FEA or ESSA, our Educational Support Staff Organization, which encompasses a lot of people, not just executive directors. And because they do not have a bargaining unit, we have to make these raises through board action. And I think it's very important that we show that we value all of our district's employees, regardless of whether or not they are a bargaining unit. And this line is very much in line with the raises that were negotiated for other units. And I am happy to support what little we can give them, because I think everyone in our district does amazing work and deserves so much more. With that, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
The next item is the revised fiscal year 2025 through 2030 six-year capital improvement plan adoption. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the revised FY 2025-2030 six-year capital improvement plan.
Second?
The Alaska Department of Education and Early Development requires the board adopt a six-year capital improvement plan, or a KIP, be submitted annually by September 1st in order to be considered for state grant funding. The administration is now submitting the revised fiscal year 2025 through 2030 six-year capital improvement plan for adoption by the school board to include redirection of funding for three approved projects. Administration will speak to this plan.
Hi, good evening. I'm having problems trying to share my screen. Sorry about that.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will keep working on technology while we do that.
... some funding for the following projects. So I just kind of...
Hold on, I need you to pause. I did a foul and did not check with our audiovisual person before I called this back. That is on me. Can you please begin again?
Okay, hello, good evening. I am Johanna Karion, the Executive Director for Facilities. I have with me Janet Smith from the Borough Public Works, the Deputy Director there. And then we're here requesting to redirect some funding for the following projects that you see up on the screen. So from the 2013 bond series, Ordinance 2013-60, there were some remaining funds from the North Pole Middle Mechanical Energy upgrades, as well as Ryan Middle School. And I'm going to kind of break them down for you a little bit. So there was 1.4 million remaining funds from that project, and we would like to request that to be redirected to the North Pole Exterior Renovation Project. From the 2013 bond series, remaining funds from the Ryan Middle School replacement, there's 1.1 million left over bond money, and we would like to redirect that to North Pole Middle, 731,709. And this money, combined with the remaining funds from the North Pole Middle Mechanical Energy, will result in the total cost of $2.1 million. And then the other remaining funds from the Ryan Middle School, we would like to redirect 125,000 to Two Rivers Elementary School, and that's the interior renovation project. And that will bring the project up to a total of 454,000. And then Ryan Middle School, again, has that remaining money. We would like to redirect 325,000 to the Tanaona Middle School Exterior Renovation Project, and that project will cost a total of 3.1 million. And then I have also the revised capital improvement project here for the 2025-2030 six-year plan. So typically, this is usually signed in June. We had to do a revision to incorporate the new funds for Two Rivers, Tanaona Middle, and North Pole Middle to meet the deed requirements. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer.
Ms. Burnett, then Mr. Doran?
So my question is really kind of based around our strategic planning that we're getting ready to do. I see all these things put into the capital improvement. If, say, within our strategic planning, one of these were to fall off and end up into a school closure, is that something that can be altered and it can be taken off the list, and then those funds allocated elsewhere? Or how does that work?
So if you're speaking specifically about the bond, those can't be allocated elsewhere due to the fact that they were voted on back in 2013, and they're specifically allocated to those three schools mentioned.
Go ahead.
So then what happens if we were to close a school with a bond on it?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Smith.
I don't know the exact specifics of that. I know there are requirements, if it's like a 30-year bond or something. I don't have the exact details, but it poses a challenge for sure. And I can get more information if you need.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you, and thanks for being here tonight, both of you, to answer our questions. So again, staying with the bonds for a moment. The movement of the funds in general, in the face of it looks good. But you said they can only go to these schools. So were they part of the original bond?
Yes, so they were part of the 2013 dash 60 bond series by Mail Look Hopkins at the time. And that's what was voted on for those three projects.
Okay, so, don't mind. I don't mean to put you on the spot, except, I mean, to know here. So like on the middle school, the Ryan project, I thought that was a standalone bond? I mean, it was something just for Ryan? It's great that we have a surplus and how we can reuse that. But how does that, if that was a standalone, how does that get decided where that goes?
So there is leftover bond money from the Ryan Middle School. And then with that leftover money, there was another vote, bond. And that was Tanaona Middle School, Two Rivers, and North Pole Middle were voted on, correct, Janet?
Yeah, so there were two propositions voted that year. And so, and I understand you're wondering, how are we taking money specifically for Ryan? Since the other projects were also approved and voted from the community, we can use that money on those projects. We can use the Ryan money on those projects. And these projects are happening. They're in the works. And we're just adding some, basically due to the cost of construction, as we all know, it's kind of going crazy, trying to enhance them a little bit to get more what the intended scope was. At this point, without this redirect, then the scope would be cut on these projects because we just don't have the money to do everything we wanted.
And then just kind of want to add to that. Janet mentioned that Proposition 1 was at the Ryan Middle School. And then Proposition 2 was those three schools that were mentioned.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
So as long as they were done at the same, in the same election, we can, we've got that latitude to use of that money?
I don't know those exact details. But as long as the voters approved money on certain projects and the scope of the projects. I guess I don't know specifically. But we have, I've had extensive conversations with deed and it's all.
Okay, that's, great.
Our bond council and stuff, so.
Okay, great, great, thank you very much.
They were already approved by deed. This is just now an additional redirection that we need for the projects that are already happening.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Put me back in the key.
I'm not seeing anyone else, Mr. Doran.
So just in terms of the revision, sorry, because my question was, what's revised? So I'm thinking the Anne Ween Project Number 4 is part of the revision because we got the federal grant. And is that part of the revision?
Yes, so I do, I do have the participating share on this revision of 402,000. And there's a note in there to say that we did receive the DOE grant. And then the only other revision is adding those three schools with the.
And follow up to that. The, just so I understand, and Ms. Smith, you might have answered it, but I want to make sure I understand that on those three schools, this money adds, adds more into what we projected originally the cost might be, but is to try and help cover the costs since the KIP was first done to now that we expect those costs to be higher and this helps balance those out. And I think you might have indicated, though, it may have expanded the scope a little bit of the project.
The scope of the project never did expand. We stuck to the original project scope. But it is due to inflation costs that we have to add additional funds in order to meet the demands for today's construction.
Okay, and I've got one more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay, the column that's marked SOA aid, what does that stand for?
State, sorry, where is that? Oh, that's part of their, it's part of their criteria. And I think it just means state of Alaska.
Okay, and the asterisk, which is on some but not on others, what does the asterisk stand for?
And I will bring up that sheet. I will find out and get back to you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, it's just, yeah, anyway, yeah, if you could. I'm just curious why some of them have and some don't, so. Thank you very much.
So because we didn't take public comment, I need to ask, is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple? She unmuted and then she muted. Ms. Maple? I can't hear her. She's unmuted. Ms. Maple? I think, I know, I can't hear her best. Okay, I think that was a yes for Ms. Maple, thank you. And Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
The next item on our agenda, we begin information and reports, is the strategic plan. Associate Partner Drew, should have practiced this one, I want to say schnance, with Education Elements, will speak to the strategic plan.
We will see if anyone, oh, I can see me now. Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Well, good evening, everybody. Really happy to be presenting to you all today on the strategic planning work that we're really excited to begin in the near future, as was alluded to a couple minutes ago. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. We will review a couple slides together that will give you an overview of what that process will look like. And then at the, at the end of this portion, there'll be plenty of time for some questions as, as they go through the presentation. If you do need to interrupt at any point, please feel free to do so. But just know that there is going to be some time at the end. Can everyone see the slides?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. So in addition to strategic planning, we're also going to be talking about how that's going to be really purposefully integrated into a facility's utilization strategy. These two things are, you know, really integral, integral sort of resources that are going to serve as sort of barometers for future decision-making in the district as it pertains to where people are learning, where people are working, where people are teaching. And also, what are the things that the district really holds to be truly important for their future direction in the next three, five, even 10 years down the road? So just before we get into all of that, I'll introduce myself. My name is Drew Shon, so I'm an associate partner with Education Elements. And I have the pleasure of supporting schools and school districts in Alaska, Hawaii, Arizona, Michigan, and Utah. As a company, we have been around for about 15 years now, actually just shy of 15 years. And have had lots of different experiences working in many, many different areas that have had the, a pretty significant impact on over 400 school districts, 5,700 schools, and five and a half million students. And I'll get into what exactly we do in just a moment. But getting even closer to home here, real quick, just wanted to let you all know that, that we have done some work in Alaska before, specifically with Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. Most recently, we helped the district to develop a return-to-learn plan following the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Before that, we worked with the district on a number of fronts, from personalized learning, supported district leaders, instructional coaches, worked on some competency-based learning pilots. So have dabbled in a couple different areas with the district so far. So that's why we're really excited to re-enter the conversation and support the district in a new way. So just as far as the things that we, Education Elements, really pride ourselves on, our core competencies here. You can see the solutions that we provide to school districts across the country, ranging from instruction to leadership, strategy, curriculum, and school improvement. We, for the purposes of today, we're really going to be focused on the strategy portion. So how might we help school districts, school districts to develop strategic direction? And as we work, some of the things that we really pride ourselves on are, first of all, artful implementation. We know that school districts have a lot of things that they need to get done. And we have a team of, a really diverse team of experts to help districts get the things done that they need to get done. It's not always necessarily about adding something to the plate. We like to say that our work helps everything on the plate taste better. And as we do that, as we implement artfully, we're also being really mindful to build capacity of the people that we're working with. We believe that schools grow when people grow. So we want to make sure that in all of our engagements with the schools and the districts that we work with, we're enabling all stakeholders within that particular environment to be able to do their best work. And then we also pride ourselves on being critical friends. We care really deeply about the success of the schools and the districts that we work with. And we're really good at saying things that not, not only districts want to hear, but what they need to hear. So having that outside perspective can really be a beneficial, a beneficial value add, especially when we're thinking about something as involved and as significant as a strategic plan and a facilities utilization plan. And just some of the things, kind of piggybacking off of that critical friendship that we're really excited to be able to provide. I'm not going to go word for word here, but we do have a great deal of experience and expertise in the strategic planning work specifically. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I believe we're into the neighborhood of close to 50 or 60 strategic plans that we've helped districts to create from coast to coast. We offer objectivity and neutrality. Sometimes when there are, you know, a lot of emotions, a lot of feelings associated with work similar to a strategic plan, it's helpful to have somebody to sort of help, help usher the process along, kind of see the forest through the trees and make sure that we're staying accountable to the goals that we've set for ourselves as far as getting this project done. Time and resource management really speaks to our accountability buddy hat that we can put on. Really ensuring, and we'll get into this in a little bit more detail in a couple minutes, facilitating and providing thought leadership around stakeholder engagement and communication is super critical for strategic planning in particular. And then implementation and evaluation, I'll speak to that in a little bit too. But we want to make sure that as we're helping the district to craft the strategic plan, it's not just checking the box. Once the plan is authored, that's really where the hard work begins. So we want to make sure that we're equipping the district with the tools, the monitoring, the metrics that you'll need to effectively evaluate, are the things that you want to get done actually getting done? I'll pause there, any questions so far?
We're not seeing any.
Okay, great. So as I mentioned before, we're going to be putting a specific emphasis and focus on the strategic planning work in, in the neighborhood, in the Department of Facilities. Because the district has recognized that that is, that is an issue, a challenge, a complex one at that, that needs to be addressed soon. That's, time is really of the essence to get some decisions made around the future of the learning spaces within the district because that's going to have a really significant impact on the overall strategy that the district wants to carry out as far as other things go, you know, within, within the school system. So considerations around instruction, around staffing, around transportation, around community engagement, you name it, really revolves a lot around, around facilities. So as, as we've discussed prior to this meeting, we wanted to make sure that that was really integrated seamlessly within the strategic planning process. And there will be a couple diagrams in a few slides where you'll kind of see how those two pieces will fit seamlessly together. But before we do that, I do want to call out some of the things that we have noticed in terms of how districts have developed strategic plans in the past. The things that we want to really make sure that we're calling out so we don't fall into these traps. One of those traps is inaccessibility. So sometimes districts will say, you know, gather a small group of folks together and say, they are the ones who are going to be solely responsible for crafting the strategic plan and really carrying it out. But it's really difficult for others to interpret at that point. So having that knowledge really shared amongst a small group of people, we've found that that typically isn't the best way to get things done. Oftentimes, strategic plans, when not crafted in a, I guess, not crafted with that elements. But we've, we've found that some strategic plans in districts have run into challenges with this one-and-done situation where the strategic plan is authored, it's printed, it's published, it sits on a shelf, but then it collects dust. And then five years rolled out, five years lapse, and then the conversation around strategic planning comes up again. And hardly anybody can really point to anything that happened in the last strategic plan. So we want to make sure that that definitely isn't the case here. And also, we want to make sure that the plan is, as I alluded to before, really centered around success criteria and metrics for evaluating the progress being made on strategic initiatives. We want this to be a, pardon the pun, but a north star for the district. We want this to be something where all decisions are really pointing to and is used as a, uses a barometer for that decision-making so that everything from what's happening at the classroom level all the way up to the central office level is really aligned and centered around this strategy that collectively as a community will, in the next several months, really start to take shape. And when we look at the anatomy of a strategic plan, you can see a couple different components that will, that will fold into what will eventually be created by the end of next school year. There are a couple different ways that you can label some of these sections. But we're going to start our process really by articulating what is our mission. Let's revisit those, those core components, a mission, vision, and values to really ensure that we have a strong foundation for then starting to determine what are the priorities that we want to set for the district? What are the things that are really important for us to accomplish? Below that, what are the goals, the, the objectives and the KPIs that are going to, or key performance indicators that are going to fall within those priorities so that we can really monitor progress? And then from there, initiatives and strategies that are going to be those tactical and tangible things that will really help us to move the needle on those priorities and on those goals that we set forth in the strategic plan. And getting back to facilities here, real quick, we, we do want to, we do want to make sure that this is really the, the guiding focus for the strategic planning. we do want to make sure that this is really the, the guiding focus for the strategic planning process. Because as I alluded to a couple of minutes ago, there really are a lot of implications for the decisions made around facilities. So as we focus on the future of facilities, we really wanted to have this mindset of shaping tomorrow's learning spaces today. And also, living within our means by, while ensuring excellence. We know that there are going to be some, some limits, some guardrails and guidelines and parameters that we're going to have to operate within. So how can we still make sure that what we are providing to all the stakeholders in the school district is really the best and most excellent options possible? While still grappling with some of these challenges related to limited resources, shifting populations, demographic trends, some of those contributing factors to why we need to focus on facilities in the first place. And as we begin that facilities utilization strategy process, there's a couple of components that we're going to want to take a look at and incorporate into the formulation of what that, what that facilities utilization plan is going to look like. So that's going to include things like having an assessment done of current facilities. What are the conditions of those spaces? What are, what are the enrollment trends in different schools? What are, you know, what are, what, what, how can we take a holistic look at what we have as far as facilities go? And then sort of start after we've established that current state to think about, what are the things that we need in the future? Based on the, the mission envisioned and values that we've articulated are really important to us and are going to guide us in our strategic direction. We'll then need to think about, you know, with this needs assessment, how are we going to get from where we are to where we need to be? And that's where the implementation plan will come in. And all along the way, we're going to, I keep alluding to this, but in a couple of slides, you're going to see the intentional and purposeful ways that we want to engage the community throughout the process so that their voice, their voices are heard at strategic points and at regular cadences throughout the process. So that as, as much input as we can, you know, fold into the process is able to be folded in so that we can make decisions that are really reflective of those who live in our communities and learn in our learning spaces, learn and work in our learning spaces. And from that, those four components in the facilities utilization strategy, that will then fold into some of the, the other broader pieces of the strategic plan that will focus on other areas that the district wants to set goals around and make some movement on. So to look at this in a visual way, sort of our process will begin, you know, very shortly actually, with a pretty comprehensive community engagement effort. So in this period of time, which you'll see on the timeline in a couple of moments, we're going to take a, a number of different strategies that we have, tried and true strategies that we have really developed some expertise in at Education Elements to ensure that we are asking the right questions, we're gathering the right data, and we're pulling the right groups of people to inform some of the really important decisions we're going to need to make as far as that facilities utilization strategy goes. Once that facilities utilization strategy is complete, that will then feed into that district strategic plan. As we get into that space and we transition from that focus on facilities to those broader strategies, we want to make sure that we're bringing the community back in to give their feedback on what we've developed as a facilities utilization strategy. And to also ask them some additional questions around, you know, what are some important things for them? And for the people who are crafting the strategic plan to consider as that process goes underway. We're really front-loading the community engagement process here in a, in a pretty significant way because we, we want to be able to ask questions and gather insights that relate both to the strategic plan that we'll be able to pick up later on down the process, but more immediately with that facilities utilization strategy. And we really, I think that's on the next slide, yeah. We really believe that community engagement is a process and not an event. We can't just say we've, you know, we've engaged the community once, so we're going to check that box and not do it again. Authentic constituent engagement is really a lengthy process and we believe that it's a worthwhile one. When done in a purposeful and an intentional way. What we're going to be able to do, as, as I said earlier, is really work to craft the right questions to give us the right insights. In all of the work that we've done with other districts across the country, we've developed banks of questions, question sets, survey, survey templates, focus group templates that will help us, that will help us to get some of the right information that we're going to need to hopefully make this process as smooth as possible. There's obviously going to be some friction along the way and we're, we're very aware and prepared for that. But we want to make sure that something the community sees throughout this process is that there are going to be multiple ways that they can share their thoughts, share their opinions. And more importantly, that those thoughts, opinions, views are being translated into visible, visible components in both the facilities utilization and the strategic plan. Just playing, paying lip service to the community and saying, we hear you. And then, you know, strategic plans come out and they don't see any of their voice reflected in that is definitely something that we want to avoid. So this, the community engagement process for us is really a two-way street. We want this to be as, really the opportunity to facilitate a conversation, not a one and done thing. And we think a lot about this. So in order to kind of capture and articulate our viewpoint and our methodology around community engagement, we've authored this equitable inclusion guide, which is available on our website. And I believe these slides were, were provided in advance. There's a hyperlink on, on one of them. But if you wanted to click into this in more detail, you certainly can. Really outlines, really dozens of strategies that we'll be able to pull from and considerations that we'll need to make around each of those to ensure that we are asking the right people, the right questions at the right time to give us the right information that will help us to accomplish what we need to as far as the development of these strategic plans go. And then just as another look on the timeline here. If, if all goes according to plan and we're able to sort of kick things off in May with that community engagement effort, will then lead that, that will then lead into the facilities utilization planning, which should be done by the end of the summer, ready for the next school year. We'll then hop back into that community engagement phase, where, where, as I said earlier, we'll be gathering feedback on the facilities utilization planning and then use all of the, the data collected throughout this entire process from May, really through October, November, to then lead into that strategic planning work, which will get us ready to develop a plan. A strategic plan and the implementation metrics necessarily, necessary for carrying out that plan by the end of, definitely by the end of next school year. But more realistically, and where we really want to shoot for is January, February. So that can then inform the next budget that the, that the school board sets. And then just to zoom in a little bit more on the strategic planning process itself. You can see sort of how we're taking that community engagement work that's going to happen in the, the front-loading of the process that will then lead into articulating those core tenants of what's going to guide the strategic plan. As, and we collectively call that the strategic direction, those beliefs, vision, mission, values, all of that. And then we'll move into the design phase where we will synthesize that stakeholder data and our, and identify what are the key initiatives, what are the, I, I often refer to them as focus areas that the district will want to focus their attention on in the next three, five, seven, 10 years, however long we decide will be the window for this plan. What are those, those pillars that the district is really going to rally behind? And then what are those initiatives, outcomes, and metrics that are going to fall under those pillars? That we're going to be able to work on, on a, on a regular basis to move the needle and accomplish those goals. And then in the launch phase, that's when we're going to get really tactical around how do we communicate what's happening in the strategic plan and the facilities utilization plan as well, out to the community? What are going to be the, the ways that we are monitoring and making sure that we are making good on the promises that we've made within the strategic plan? And how can we identify additional opportunities and avenues for communication, two-way communication? So that the strategic plan is not something that sits on a shelf and collects dust, but is an active, active participant really, in the decision-making process for the district moving forward. I touched on this briefly a moment ago, but I do want to re-emphasize the fact that just creating a strategic plan is, is great and we celebrate that. But we also celebrate the process and all of the work that happens to get to these really critical resources to help the district make really important decisions. So along the way, as we work with various groups from the district and even from the broader community, we really want to make sure that this is a capacity building opportunity and a way for a really strong shared sense of ownership to occur from everyone who is participating in the process, regardless of how involved they are. This really enhances the capacity of the district to implement the plan eventually and adapt the plan according to changing conditions as those, as those kind of come up into the future. Strategic plans in our mind are meant to be guideposts, guidelines, guardrails, what have you, to, to sort of give the parameters for where decision-making can happen. But as far as the how goes, as far as the, the different strategies and tactics that need to happen in order to get to that strategic vision, we definitely want to give ourselves permission to be flexible and agile because conditions are changing all the time. We can redefine how we get to our goals, but we really do want to make sure that those goals are, are strong and steadfast because we need something that we all agree upon is important for us to work towards. There's a lot of words on this slide as well, so I won't read them all. But just want to articulate, articulate some of the things that Education Elements would provide throughout this process and some of the things we would lean on the school district to provide. We, we are primarily the condition creators for some of this work to happen. So we're really good at facilitating groups to accomplish, you know, components of, of these particular plans. Really great at the community engagement work. But what we, while we have a lot of expertise in the methodology and then carrying out the processes and protocols to get these resources created in a, in a timely manner, we don't have, and we need to be honest with ourselves, we will never have as much knowledge or local context as those who are in the districts that we are working with. So what we primarily rely on the district teams to help us out with is making sure that we are finding the right folks to participate in the right conversations so that we are gathering adequate and informative data that will help us to create plans that are really going to be beneficial and to serve the members of the community that this plan will ultimately represent. I've talked a little bit about the different teams that will comprise the strategic planning process. This might be a little hard to read, but I'm going to, I'll toggle over to the next slide in a second. This graphic just kind of shows the hierarchy is not necessarily the right word, but the interworking relationships between each of the teams that we will establish through the strategic planning process to make sure that decisions are being made in a timely manner. And we're consulting the right folks to inform those decisions at, at the right times during the process. So the project team is really the group who will help us with logistics, make sure that the, the right folks are in the right room. That's primarily going to be individuals, actually I'll toggle over now. Primarily district and school board leaders, probably in the neighborhood of four to five, who will focus on, on those logistics pieces and help to drive the completion of the projects through certain processes and will really lean in at the end of the, the strategic planning process as well and help to, help to make some decisions around how the plans are effectively going to be communicated out to the broader community. The steering team is really the, the heart of the strategic planning process, I would say, because that's where the core decisions are made. They are really going to serve as the, sort of like the sign-off on the strategic plan and on the facilities utilization plan. Because they're going to be at a position where they kind of sit below the project team, but they sit above the, the focus area teams. And they're able to synthesize a lot of information, both coming from both of those directions. And we think they're well positioned to be that group, to sort of be that, that final decision maker as far as what we, what, when the plans that we develop are safe enough to implement. And this group will really represent a wide variety of stakeholder groups. This will be of school district staff, it'll be members of the community, families, students, teachers, what have you. We really want to make sure there's a, a variety of perspectives on this steering team because it is so critical to the completion of the strategic plan. And then in the focus area teams, this is where we really get down into the details and we start to confer and bring in experts in certain areas based on the focus areas that the district has articulated are going to be really important to the success of the plan. So these will be about eight to 10 individuals per team. And there, those will be identified after the community engagement process happens so that we are able to do the synthesis of the data that we gather from the community to then inform, you know, what are those priorities going to be and who are the right people to, to be on those teams? And even beyond that, those who might not necessarily want to be a part of the strategic planning process on a day-to-day basis. We want to make sure that we have a bench of advisors who are able to provide perspective and context and feedback on some of the decisions that we make. Because we know that we can't get all of the experts in the room at the same time, the table is only so big. But what we want to do is be really purposeful in making sure the right people are at that table at the right time. These are just a couple of examples of some of the plans that we've, we've created or helped to facilitate in the past. And there are plenty more to look at on our website. But the last thing I want to leave you with here too is, is sort of what happens when the strategic plan and facilities utilization plan are complete? That is, that's a great milestone, but when those plans are complete, it's not the finish line, it's actually the starting line. And we have some tools that we will co-develop with the steering team and with the project team to ensure that all of the priorities, all of the initiatives and goals that are set in the strategic plan have a way to be monitored from a, a really high level to ensure that we can get an accurate read on how progress is being made. So that that can be shared out, that can then be shared out with the community. And as many people as possible have this layer or insight transparency into progress being made on the plan so that we can provide those avenues for ongoing stakeholder engagement and feedback. And with all of that, I hope that was a, an informative and perhaps, perhaps too thorough, maybe not thorough enough overview of how the strategic planning process will unfold. Would love to hear any questions that y'all have moving forward, and I'm happy to take those now.
Mr. Doran.
I'll go with two and then you can put me back in the thing. Thank you, Drew, very much for your presentation tonight. If you could send us that monitoring progress slide, I don't think that made it into our packet.
That's correct.
So, question I'd like to start with is, and to emphasize, it's, it's nice to have a third-party perspective, having done some, some of this my own in other places. That's very, very valuable to have and, and the breadth of knowledge that Ed Elements brings. So you've done work with us primarily in the, I'm looking at your service offerings in the instructional design and implementation, particularly the personalized learning piece. So it's going to be a shift in organizational strategy. Could you talk a little bit about where, how this is different? Where you, we're doing a lot of training with our staff and, and such. But now you'd be coming in as a listener to our community. Could you talk to that listening component to our various stakeholders in our community?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And you're, you're correct, a lot of the work that we have done with the district in the past has been definitely around the capacity building piece with the instructional design lens. And that was, you know, the focus of that work was definitely more concrete and more direct than something a little bit more open-ended and broad, like a strategic planning process would be. So we, as, as I've shared in the, let me see if I can pull that slide back up. Yeah, so as I, as I mentioned, we have a, a lot of thought leadership around how we can be great listeners and how we can not necess, and this, this is not a responsibility that we, we sort of hold just for ourselves. We want this to be an opportunity for others in the district to gather the skills, the knowledge, the frameworks, the processes to also be listeners through this process and help us to synthesize the information that we gather. Part of these community engagements. Part of these community engagements, I mean, the recommendations that I will make for the initial community engagement work to be done will be a combination of focus groups, of a targeted survey, perhaps some town halls, and then also some empathy interviews. The difference between these focus groups and empathy interviews is really that, for example, we we often do one on one interviews with school board members, with district leaders, with those who have had a really deep deep experience with the district to get some some really granular and detailed information with them. Whereas the focus groups are really centered around yeah, we we want to be intentional in gathering individuals whose voices are are definitely have existing avenues to be heard, but we want to pay even more attention to gathering information from folks who might not necessarily be the first ones to raise their hand or you know, the first ones to attend an event or to provide their feedback. This is a, this is a really great avenue and and platform for those individuals to really share their authentic and truthful sort of reflections on their experience in the district. And to do that sometimes with an external third party is, as you started to allude to, can sometimes be a little less intimidating just because, you know, while we're familiar with the district and while we are invested in the district as as a partner in this work, we don't necessarily represent the district. So we found that focus groups specifically with that external third party can be particularly beneficial. So all that to say, we want to make sure that we are sort of leading by example in terms of the the strategies that we are utilizing to gather community input and also leaning on the expertise of those who are really close with the district, who have had deep and rich experience with the district to make sure that we are not that we are also learning from them along the way. Does that answer your question?
It's the start of a conversation, so I and I appreciate that. And it does lead me right into my next question.
Dr. Minor had a comment and then Mr. Doran.
And it was germane to this conversation. So my experience with education elements was the back to school planning coming out of COVID, and really, when you boil that down, that was a mini strategic plan to try to get, you know, our district launched into returning to school. And I was really impressed with the way that they designed that work with their ability to listen to large groups of stakeholders. I mean, we had Zooms with almost 100 stakeholders in the room giving their opinions on how we should return safely to school. And they did a really nice job synthesizing that information down and leading that into critical plans coming back into school. And so while I wasn't in the district when they were working on personalized learning and more of those instructional aspects, I do have experience with education elements on the planning side and was definitely very impressed with with that work.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you. And having been also a beneficiary in some indirectly of that and that experience, I think, was good. And so I was glad to see it in in the presentation mentioned too. So was very mindful in terms of trying to listen to our community and get engaged. Strategies that you or things that Ed Elements does in terms of reaching stakeholders who don't typically attend meetings, don't necessarily answer surveys, don't do the digital virtual, are quieter stakeholders, but very, very important to what's going on in our schools and what we want for our students. Strategies that you've that Ed Elements has used in terms of trying to reach out, sometimes I call them the boardwalk connections. Principals have them as parents are dropping off kids or those types of things. But could you address reaching those those types of stakeholders?
Certainly, yeah. So a lot of those, I think those folks kind of fall into two of the primary teams that we would want to establish here. One being those one being in the planning teams where we're really leaning on experts that are closely familiar with those focus areas that that we identify within the strategic plan, as well as those advisors that kind of non-involved, non-super involved, but still very interested in the strategic planning process that have specific expertise in particular areas. So for example, if let's say there was a a strategy that was related to English language learners in in the strategic plan, we would probably want to make sure that we're identifying through multiple channels. You know, who are those folks that are advocates for the English learner community? Who are the the English learner teachers who might be able to point us to those individuals who have a really valuable perspective, but they don't necessarily raise their hand all the time? They're not necessarily super comfortable chiming into a large group conversation and working with the folks who are closest to the individuals in the in the groups of individuals that we really want to see a dynamic impact and a shift in their experience happen. We want to get creative with the people who we are asking and get as close to the source as possible. And that doesn't necessarily happen with those traditional the the individuals that you might default to in a school system, the decision makers, for example. So going to the principal of a school or principals of schools to gather their perspective is great. They can provide really valuable input on building leadership, on on instructional leadership, those kind of things. But what we might need to ask questions that are getting really to the root of some of the the challenges that we're identifying, we're going to want to talk to to front office staff, we're going to want to talk to guidance counselors, we're going to want to talk to after school, you know, program volunteers. The folks who are really closest to the day to day experience of students, of teachers, of families are are certainly where we want to be operating as far as, you know, gathering gathering that input from. And we probably, we typically do that through the focus groups just because that is a that's a natural vehicle for those sort of blinking on the word, the those groups who aren't necessarily vocal all the time. As I had mentioned, the focus groups are a great way to do that, but we also can can kind of lean on them in an advisory capacity. Depending on, it is going to depend on what those focus areas end up being in gathering that that community input. But we've seen some some creative strategies and creative individuals kind of come into the process and provide really insightful perspective that we might have not necessarily thought of or looked into. Had we just relied on those sort of default individuals in the district that are often conferred and and consulted with.
I do a follow up.
Go ahead.
I want to be careful because this is only the first conversation we've had, and I don't want to belabor too long. But just putting in the hopper, you've talked about groups within the district, I'm looking at how we reach out to and get input. Like you kind of mentioned, ELL parents that we're actually talking to the parents, we're getting them involved in the conversation, we're hearing from them, we're hearing from students, elementary, middle and high. You know, families who may not often be around the school, but they are very, very interested in what their students are getting. So that's what I'm looking for and perhaps you could send her as a note on on that.
I will.
Unless you have something quickly. And then if you just put me back in the queue.
Are there other board member questions? So, Mr. Doran, I'm going to ask this to be your last question. It doesn't appear that anyone else has any, and we have a very heavy agenda tonight. So in the interest of time, any other ones, if we could forward those to Drew, and I will remind board members that Dr. Minor is going to set up small sessions with three or less board members so we don't break OMA so we can continue the conversation with Ed Elements in that avenue. Mr. Doran.
Then I will go to my the other question that I have is just more to administration and our process. As I mentioned, this is the first conversation we're having. I think this is a topic that deserves broad board conversation, not just little groups. And I am concerned that we have a focus that seems to be driving strategic planning. And so I'll put the question out there, and I hope we will engage as a board, as a full board on it. This strategic planning in my mind is what is the learning we want for our students and over the next five years or more? Buildings facilitation has been mentioned several times here as basically the primary and the driving force, that it will guide the strategic planning, and I think that's reversed. And I hope that we will reconsider that because I think that, yes, in strategic planning, at this particular time, facilities is a player, they are a resource. They shouldn't be the driver, but how do they provide a resource to what we want for kids, what we want for students? Just like HR is a resource, our staffing, our personnel, those types of things, finances is a resource. Keeping those realities, I really like that we're taking some opportunity to talk about facilities themselves, but I do think we need to reverse that that focus. And I really do hope that we will discuss this as a board, not just drive forward. And that's where I think we are right now.
Dr. Minor.
Yeah, so I, I think I heard a question in there in terms of focus areas and the reason for a focus area of facilities upfront, while it's not driving the strategic plan, it is very much in line with our timelines of budgets. And so in hearing the conversations around school consolidations and school closures and the community asking for a solid plan around our facilities, as President Hardy and I talked about the strategic plan and the timeline of it, we thought it was really important to have one component of the strategic plan potentially be facilities and try to have some of those in-depth conversations prior to November and December when my proposed budget is launched. Obviously, if the board wants to change around focus areas or do that in a different timeline, you know, that that is up to the board and that's the board's conversation. But I would recommend to the board that we have some in-depth facilities conversation going into next budget cycle. And so I'm sure we can have more conversations around the additional components, but did want to clarify, I don't feel that the facilities is driving the plan. It was just put at the front, the front in relationship with the timeline, knowing that proposed budget comes in that November, December timeframe in terms of us putting it together.
Any further board questions or comments? Mr. Doran.
I appreciate that, and I won't, we, I hope we will have that conversation. I do want to affirm that we need to look at building pieces. But I am concerned when I hear the guiding focus for strategic planning process is the future of facilities. And there are other ones in there, so that's why my concern is there, that it should be the other way. Yes, we need the information and I understand that piece, but I'm just concerned. I've expressed my concern and I hope we will have a robust conversation across the board.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes, thank you, President Hardy. Considering that we have done a strategic plan before and we worked around the concepts and strategies that we needed for our students, staff and our district, we are in a totally different time and shift. Things have evolved in a total different direction. And this is much needed work that needs to come forward and applaud the initiative to engage again so that we can come out with a clear plan of of things that some we can anticipate, but mostly we can't anticipate them. So the the input of our administrative staff and community and teachers and students and parents to be able to come out with a workable plan is going to be important to our future and how we can give to students tools that they need for pathways, multiple pathways of success and to pursue their academic goals. So I'm looking forward to the work. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any further questions from the board. Thank you so much for presenting for us today, and I look forward, and the board does, with working with you for our further.
Thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is the Durham Transportation Report. The administration and Will Zimmerman, West Area Senior Vice President for Durham Transportation, will provide a current bus report.
Good evening. Can you all hear me all right?
We can.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Appreciate the time. Got some really positive news for the board and and the district as a whole. We talked and when I talked in September was the last board meeting that I attended and spoke. I spoke a lot about some recruiting efforts that we were doing and some changes that we're making in that regard. And it was very positive start of the school year as far as driver counts for Durham and that that progress has continued throughout the school year, I'm happy to report. We had increased our driver count just two weeks ago of an all time high of 127 drivers. That includes 109 drivers that are Monday through Friday, AM and PM drivers. In addition to that, we have some part time drivers and drivers that are on LOA altogether, you roll that in, and it's 127 127 drivers, which is a 28 driver increase from where we started this school year. On the monitor front, the news continues to be, continues to be positive. We started the school year with roughly 26 driver bus monitors and we have currently reached 45. So altogether between drivers and monitors, we've made able to increase our staff count almost 50 individuals, which has resulted in a number of positive things. It's resulted in us not only taking on more routes to help further meet the district needs, but it's also resulted in us being able to not bring drivers from the lower 48, all those drivers that are operating those routes are all Fairbanks drivers, which provides a much more stable service for the students. It gives them more consistent bus drivers and it gives them drivers that are local that know the area and know the unique challenges that that the climate and geographic, you know, layout present that drivers from the lower 48 may not fully understand and grasp. So a lot of positive things moving there, and it continues to remain that way. We have six hiring events along with six more social media pushes scheduled over the next three months to to really push that up through the summer. We currently have 24 individuals in the driver pipeline. So driver staffing all in all keeps, it continues to improve, it continues to remain strong throughout the entire school year and throughout, it looks like into the summer as well. And flipping over to the maintenance side of things, we've had two state inspections this year. The first one yielded a 97 and a half percent first time pass for all buses. And the buses, the one and a half percent that did not pass were able to be fixed immediately that day and did not miss route service. The most recent one, similar result, 96 time percent, 96% first time pass with all the buses being able to be repaired and re-inspected that day to not miss any revenue service, any any school service routes at all. Some the management staff has, as far as the area, the general manager and the the operation supervisor has made remain stable. We did have some dispatchers that were the military spouses that have PCS to other other facilities within the lower 48. But we did, we're able to backfill those positions and they all are currently full. So that's kind of a short and quick update. Any questions that the board may have for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
Ms. Burnett.
Thank you for the amazing update. Very very encouraging hearing about all the routes that we're able to cover now. And just for clarification, the 24 more drivers that are in the pipeline, those are currently going through training and will eventually be added to our numbers. So that'll be 24 more drivers we could have possibly for next year, maybe halfway through next year.
I anticipate that you'll have more than that for next year. That's just what's currently in the pipeline with the with the drivers that, you know, the recruiting that we did over the summer, I mean, we were able to add quite a few bodies throughout that as well. So I anticipate it is going to be a mixture, I think, of those 24, nine Of those 24, nine are currently behind the wheel. There's a couple other in classroom and then there's a group that's still in higher, in background check. So the ones that are in background check, they may or may not, depending on what we find. However, the most of them that are in classroom and background check, once they meet that stage, we have a pretty good success rate of getting them through. So you should see probably an excess of 24 more drivers by the start of school.
Excellent. Thank you.
Move to extend to 10:00 P.M.
Second.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you for the update to this year. And it's good to know that we're increasing and the stability, it sounds like some of the stability of the drivers continuity there, especially with about a month left of school. So I'm focused on next year is, and I assume there'll be some attrition, but good to talk. Are we, we want to get up to our full routes? I mean, it would be our goal. How likely are we to get there? What's your best projection and fulfill the contract?
I think we can get there. Usually what happens in, in the Alaska market during the, the school year is your tourism season kind of bleeds into the beginning of the school year. So I, you know, I'll work with the transportation department in the, in the district and feel what they feel comfortable with as far as route count rollout for the new year. I anticipate, you know, just going year by year and how we've kind of, in the last two years, changed our focus and how we, you know, dealt with some of the unique challenges in the Fairbanks market. I anticipate that we could probably start with somewhere around 100 to 110 routes, depending on the comfort, how comfortable the transportation department feels with our numbers and this, and the solid, you know, turnout that I think we're going to have coming back. I think we have a pretty good idea at this point as concrete season is about to start. We've already had some people reach, reach out to us and let us know they're going to be going, doing the tourism, some of the tourism positions. We have a pretty good handle on who's, who's leaving early and coming back late. So I'm projecting somewhere between 100 to 110 for the start of school. And by within a couple of months of school, when all those people come back from those, those seasonal jobs, there's a high likelihood that we may be able to do the full 115 routes the district is wanting us to do.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay. Throughout a lot of the community over the months and its continued conversation, there's a lot of concern about safety, given the Manchu or Hall increases of large trucks coming. There have been some things identified even by DOT for a line of sight with the school buses, you know, as they pick up students, leave students off along the highway. So in talking to the trucking company, you get a comment, well, there's communication systems that they can have, et cetera. So you're, you're the entity we, we work with to bring our kids to school safely. And so could you talk a little bit about where Durham is in anticipating, addressing those safety concerns? What efforts are there? What are you looking at? What's your conversations with them? And I'm concerned, even when I drive down the highway and watching a bus come, it's not just the bus itself that may pull out, but then parents are pulling out after they're picking up their kids that time. So just that safety piece that might be helpful for our community to understand what, what Durham is doing for students, about safety.
So what we're doing is keeping an open line of communication with the general manager and some of the other employees over there that work in the safety department. Some of the employees that work in the safety department there are previous Durham employees. So we've, we've had open conversations with them, open dialogues, willing to address any safety concerns that have popped up as a result of those. As it gets heavier and heavier, I anticipate that those conversations may increase. To date, we've, we haven't had any safety issues arise between the two parties. I think early on, we may have had one conversation where a driver from the ore company forgot to turn his high beams off. I mean, something, you know, small and easily fixed like that. I think that's really the only safety concern we've had. So we've been, you know, looking at, at, you know, the routing that the district gives us and giving any feedback on anything that we think, hey, this may be an issue. We, but it's few and far between, almost, almost nonexistent at this point, as far as our issues with safety in regards to that project.
Follow-up.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Thank you. And I understand, because it's just been revving up, the latest number seems to be about 40 trucks. They'll get to 60 in the fall and with fuller loads, those types of things. But one of the things that came up and heard the conversation, both from Transport and from Ken Ross and others who have been working on this, with that communication, I understand. So you've got the conversation, but I'm looking for the, what's the plan for the action? This will be there. They will be crossing paths. One of the things that was very much is knowing, having some system that they know when there's a bus ahead of them stopped and things like that, especially where there's shortage of line of sight. So is there anything concrete to address? Because they'll be at full, full capacity when we start.
There's nothing that I'm aware of. I can have further conversations with the district and with them that would, you know, we have a zone, our system, it's a GPS system that tracks our buses, but I don't know of any system that would tell their drivers lifetime that there's a bus ahead of them. I bet that I have not had those discussions with them that pertain to a system that, that real time on their vehicles.
Okay. So then, thank you, thank you for your answer there. And if you could find out, because it has, was specific by the trucking company that said, yes, they, there are these systems and maybe there's even assistance, but that, that isn't sure that there's assistance for it. But if you could find out, because that would be an important thing and get, let us know.
Absolutely.
Not seeing any further questions from the board. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight and the information.
Thank you for the opportunity. You all have a great night.
You as well. The next item on our agenda is a 2024 Salaries and Enrollments Recommendation Report. Carl Castle, Chair of Salaries and Enrollment Commission, will speak to the Fairbanks North Starbrough Salaries and Enrollments Commission Report dated March 12, 2024. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Castle.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm glad to have this opportunity to kind of explain the memo that I sent to you guys that you have in your file. Our commission is, is really small. The duty, the official duty by borough code for our commission is to advise the Assembly as to the appropriate compensation, including salaries, benefits, and allowances of elected officials. Those elected officials include the mayor, the assembly members, the Interior Gas Utility Board, and you folks. So our little commission is only five people. I had the pleasure of being the chair of the commission this year. We only meet every two or three years, so it's kind of an intermittent duty for us. But the commission has a really nice cross-section of members from the community. There's dedicated seats for nonpartisan voters group, a business representative, labor representative, also a general public member, and somebody with public administration experience. That'd be me. That's all I got there. I have a little experience with that in some of these, several of these positions, actually. Lot of longevity on our commission. I think the average is right around 50 years in Fairbanks. So the people on our commission have been here, were engaged in the community and like to see us move forward in a positive way. The commission hasn't met since 2022. When we went through the process this year, we identified two areas of concern specifically relative to the school board. One was the total compensation or the stipend that you receive monthly and also kind of an equity or consistency issue across the board as well as between the board and other school employees. So let me explain. When we looked at the stipend, it's been static for a number of years and it hasn't progressed over the years historically very well with inflation. And it hasn't come up in at least the last four years. And we thought it was appropriate to suggest to the Assembly that the monthly stipend moved from $850 a month to $1,100 a month for the members of the school board. And the president would go from $1,000 a month to $1,300 a month. We recognize the time commitment that you people make to this, late meetings, welcome this evening to a late meeting. The workload that you go through and the amount of homework you have to do, we appreciate that very much so. And especially the importance of the work that you do to our community. I mean, you're the leaders of the future of our community and making sure that our kids provide all of us with a nice future. And we understand that and we think there's nothing more important to our community than the work our school district does. As far as equity or consistency across the board, what we were concerned with was the health benefits, because some board members take advantage of the health benefits that you can receive currently and some don't. So it's, that's kind of a funny, we felt that that was a little bit funny, the way that was put together. And it created a disparity because obviously a health benefit package is worth a significant amount of money to the individuals and some of you receive that and some of you don't. So our suggestion was that the health package be available, but if you opt into the health package, that you would pay the same monthly premium that the employees pay to be part of it. Because currently you don't have to pay to be part of it, but all other district employees do have to pay to be part of it. So there's, there's kind of an inconsistency there also. This wouldn't affect existing board members. You would still all be in the same package that you currently have by our suggestion or our recommendation. But newly elected board members would be covered by it. So you could opt in or opt, not to opt in at your choice and then just pay the same existing premium that the other school district employees pay. So kind of on one hand, you get a raise. On the other hand, it's a little bit of an expense if you want the health package, but it's the same as the other employees around. And we felt that that was consistent and it eliminated this equity disparity that we currently see. All of these decisions and recommendations were unanimous from our commission members. So I think we felt confident in it. And I'm available for questions if you have anything else for me.
Ms. Burnett.
Not necessarily for you, but to the administration, this increase for board members and such, what would that be for our budget?
Around $1,700.
So a month, in case that's now on public record. Mr. Doran.
Okay. So about $20,000 for the year?
Correct. Yep. So I think what you're trying to say is that it's not a large increase to the overall school district's budget. And I appreciate the report this evening showing the work that our school board does and the minimal amount of reimbursement they get for that work.
I don't, oh, yes, Mr. Castle.
These are recommendations to the Assembly and only recommendations to the Assembly. Historically, there's been years where the Assembly has gone verbatim and taken our recommendations. There's other years that they get put in the shredder and ignored. So I don't know where it'll go, but we'll see.
Mr. Doran.
Maybe you're going to ask clarification. The Assembly does, okay, the clarification doesn't decide our compensation?
I'm pretty sure, and correct me, that the school board would vote on its own salary increase.
That's correct.
Correct. I'm sorry. That is a little misleading. Other than the Assembly with their budget fingers, sometimes gets creative with what they try.
And currently, it is not an action item on any agenda. This memo only came to me and I actually forwarded it to Dr. Maynard because I thought he had had it and he didn't receive it. And this was the first I even knew that your board existed and I felt it was worthy of a community conversation. We have received emails saying that we are overcompensated for our jobs. And so I felt it might be good to inform our whole community what public service entails and what people are paid. And just continue to inform and over-communicate with our public about the realities of Fairbanks. Mr. Doran.
And I want to say thank you to you for sharing with the full board. I know these and to the commission on this, because this has, I know you do it on a regular basis. I've seen them over the years. And it was, and I know you've often recommended from the commission that we relook at board member compensation since it was at $400 for many, many years before it went up to the current, as you said, about three or four years ago. And having that broad perspective of different groups in town, as well as within our economic community, is greatly appreciated, all the work that you guys put into that. And it is something for food for thought for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think that is all our questions. Thank you again for coming down and presenting to us in person. We are so appreciative of your time and your service on the board.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Watershed School Charter, or Watershed Charter School Annual Report. Provided is the Charter Schools 2023-2024 Annual Report. Representatives from the Charter School will present an overview of their annual report.
I'm timing myself. All right. Thank you, President Hardy and school board members. You received the one-page infographic that has some statistics and some highlights from our school year. Just a quick note that the test, like standardized test scores are mostly from last year because we still have not received AK-Star results for, actually, no. I don't have scores from last year. So there, I have science and map, science and map growth test scores in there. But again, test scores are just a minor measure of how we define student success. So the year in review, just really quick, I'm not going to go over a bunch of it. What is not in, what is not in the list I provided is that our year has really, that the Alaska Reads Act and putting and addressing that to the best of our ability has really taken up most of the oxygen in the building. Like, there's been so much effort into adhering to that law and giving our students the best instruction we can to set them up for reading success. And I think that we've always been trying to set our students up for the best reading success. But this year, with all the components of that law, making sure that we adhere to that has been, has been a major lift. Coming up next, I might become in front of this board later on, either in May or in June, asking for you to approve, possibly, this is just on your radar in case you see me again, possibly asking for an increase to class sizes because the, the failure of, the failed attempts to increase the BSA as necessary over the past seven years has hit charters just as it has our, our neighborhood schools. And we are running as lean as we can right now. And if we don't have an increase to that BSA, we can't possibly balance our budget with our current enrollment. So PTR, I'm going to talk about a little bit about PTR because I think, so whether, I don't know how familiar all of you are with Watershed, so I'll just talk about us. One, I don't think, a quick side note on that is, I don't think charters are a monolith. We all are very different from each other. I often joke that I think our program looks as much like what you might find, or looks probably more like what you might find in Chalkitsick or at Mouthluck or where I used to teach in Good News Bay than it does. than it does Boreal Sun or Chinook or Effie Cochran. So the way we get to 22 is that there's a cost. I know that 22 seems like a real luxury to people. And in many ways, it is. And that 22 per classroom comes at a pretty heavy cost as far as how we achieve that. So we don't have a counselor, we don't have a nurse, we don't have a music teacher, we don't have a PE teacher, we don't have a behavior intervention aide, we don't have a day custodian. We have extremely limited middle school options. As far as electives, we have one. We've already done the difficult, made a difficult decision to contract out our custodian and contracted to night janitors. We have a playground that is a mud pit right now. And so we don't have summer groundskeeping or any of that. And so I say that not as a complaint. So if the listening audience hears this, like, I'm not saying that we are educational martyrs in any sense and that people should feel sorry for Watershed. I'm just saying that this is the choice that we've made. That this is the choice parents make, this is the choice staff makes, this is the choice that I make when we, when we choose Watershed. That this is, that this is what we are giving up to get what we, what we offer. And so for my next part, I was just going to talk about other choices. And to make Watershed as much of a choice as possible, one of the things that we have been working on for as long as, I would say, for as long as we've existed and certainly for as long as I've been, I've been in the office, is to increase our access to everybody in Fairbanks. And so I just want to highlight a couple of the barriers that we've been trying to address that are either real or perceived. Our lottery just wrapped up. We just held it this morning. The only preference in that lottery is a neighborhood preference. The only requirement for a lottery is that you fill out a lottery and submit it through the district application portal. It's open for over three months. Transportation is a common barrier. We had that addressed at one point. And I was so excited to hear that Durham report because I don't know if Mr. Hinton's listening on his way home, but Mr. Hinton, I'm probably going to be calling you about the number of drivers that are happening and whether we can get shuttle busing back to Watershed because that would be fantastic. We actually had it before school and after school busing, shuttle busing at one point. School meals are a barrier for many people. We now provide lunch and breakfast. About 11% of our students right now are on free and reduced lunch. We do quite a bit of skiing because it's how we get outside in the winter. We now have class sets for all K-1, 2 kids that are provided free of charge. Volunteering, there is a, some, there is some talk about the requirement of volunteering. Volunteering has never been required. We have never turned down a family or withdrawn a student because they have not volunteered enough. We, we, we need volunteers to do some of the things we do, but we have never removed a family for that. We don't even keep track of individual parents. We incentivize it and encourage it and celebrate volunteer hours, but that's about it. Probably the same you would find at a neighbor, at any other neighborhood school. And then the other, another big hurdle is before and after school care. And right now, we just don't have any sort of staff to do that. We're having a hard time just managing the after school clubs and SAS contracts. And those are on my cut list if the BSA isn't increased. The gentleman sitting to the right of me is Jason Gillum. He is our Academic Policy Committee Chair. He's been in that position for many years. And so I will end my presentation here. If you have questions regarding our APC, I want to defer them to Jason. And then I'll ask, answer any questions about the school. Thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you so much for coming. Hi, Mr. Gillum, nice to see you, sir. So you said that you could be possibly coming before us eventually, look at increasing class sizes. I understand with the BSA, that's the majority of your funding and how it all works for you guys. What are your class sizes currently at?
22.
I remember you saying that, thank you for clarifying that. And then what would you be looking to increase them to? Do you, do you have an idea?
Probably 23. Again, that's going to be based on what final funding from the state or borough is. We have held off the APC, now I'm speaking for the APC, sorry, Jason. The APC and, I mean, an elected board, right, has held that number, 22, which is written in our charter, with such high value that we have sacrificed a bit to make sure that we can hold to that number, right? And so, so we want to keep it as, we want to keep our class sizes as tight as possible. I would just, right now, we are running so lean. I don't like to admit this, but I'll admit it in a public meeting. I don't mind, I guess I don't mind. We're running so lean that it's not sustainable. It's burning people out.
Follow up?
Go ahead, Ms. Burnett.
Well, I can't speak for the board, but if you needed more than 22, 23, 24, I'd be in favor.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you both for being here. And either one of you can address my question. The numbers, and I really appreciate having them here and your filling in some of the things of, yes, what are the challenges there? So I want to give you a chance to talk a little bit about what your focus is as a charter school. And I'm going to use the term place-based, but I'm not sure that that's the exact one you use. So could you talk about that piece of the focus? And the, give us a little flavor of the climate in your school? Sort of a chance to brag about your school briefly. I know they're timing you, so, but give us a flavor of it.
I didn't include question, answering questions in the, in my promise to them.
And they won't keep me from asking questions. But go ahead, that's my main question.
I'm going to be careful because I could talk about place-based for way too long. So place-based education is just anchoring a student's place, their cultural and their environmental location in their learning. And then we keep that, that definition of place, like geographic definition of place, tight when they're in kindergarten, first grade, and then it expands out. By the time they hit fourth grade, we're really looking Alaska-wide. We expand out, we talk about, there's been some discussion about civics. We talk to kids about what it means to be an American in fifth and sixth grade. And that is one of my favorite units. And they do a fantastic job with that in our upper elementary. Eighth grade, we go out, branch out a little bit more, touch it on global issues. And then we take a much deeper dive, deeper dive into Alaska studies. We also do this on the, on the science side as well. We try to anchor it into what is in their surroundings. And then the, and to know a place, you have to get out in it. And so the other part of that is, we have a, a major emphasis on outdoor education. So a recent example is our seventh graders just returned from skiing seven miles into Lee's Cabin in the White Mountains. That trip was done in partnership with the, with Bureau of Land Management. And they camp for three days, or for, yeah, three days, two nights. They sleep in Arctic ovens, which are unheated. We turn off the stoves at night and let's let them suffer a little bit. And then they do some service learning while they're out there and they learn a little bit about land management. And so they get a little bit of learning, they get a lot of exercise, and they get a incredibly important lesson in what they are capable of accomplishing, which really does, we believe, it really transfers over to many other aspects of, of their lives. And we're very, very proud of them.
Mr. Burgess?
Thanks for your report, really appreciate it. And, you know, I know a lot about Watershed because my kids and stepkids all went there, so full disclosure. But I wanted to ask you to speak a little bit about what it would mean, what an increase to PTR, even of just one student per class, would mean to your ability to continue to implement the educational program that, that you have.
I think it just makes, it just makes it more difficult. I mean, when you think about one student in one class, it doesn't seem like the number, I mean, it doesn't seem that significant. You know, one more kid, two more kids is also another canoe that we're trying to get across Quartz Lake in a windstorm. And that, one more canoe is a lot, it's a lot. Twelve canoes was a lot this year, 13 canoes is even more. And I'm using that in a real, in a literal and a metaphorical sense. My, my concern is more, you know, is also more just building-wide. We are a tight building right now. And so people who come to our building before school, after school know that we have a line of cars because we do not have transportation at the moment. We don't have busing at the moment, you know, out and around and onto the, onto the main road, which complicates our relationship with our, with our neighbors. So I think, you know, it makes educating the students a little bit more challenging. Our teachers are totally up for it. I think that a heavier lift is going to be with, you know, when we look at it as a school, especially when we are staffed the way we are, as tight as the way we are, meeting the needs of, especially like the Alaska Reads Act, you know, because it's not just one kid in one class. We're looking at several kids, you know, in K-4, K-5 that are going to need support.
Mr. Doran?
And I did have one number question, and this is my last one. Is about the, the map reading and math scores and students meeting the projected goals. For people understanding, that's reflective of growth? And if you could just elaborate a little bit on that.
So, yeah, the, so it's a growth target. And the idea is that if a student scores 180 at the beginning of the year, MAP, this assessment program, will then assign a growth target for them. So maybe I'll say, we expect you to grow by eight points at the end of the year because on average, fit, or I won't even say on average, because 50% of students at that who score a 180 will grow eight points by the end of the year. So based on that, about 50, so 55% of our students, which is very average, met their projected reading goals. And this is third through eighth grade. Met them last year and then 85, 84% of them met, met it in math.
Okay, so your students are making good growth and that's part of all the hard work that your teachers are doing, parents are doing, students are doing. And so I just wanted to make sure that people understood growth is a really important piece for student learning. So, thanks.
You bet, that's a plug for MAP. And if we're going to talk about standardized tests, if we're going to talk about standardized tests, this is a plug for math in that we get actionable data that reflects student learning. Whereas, and I know that charters get wrapped into this because the light of Juno on charters and their performance on aged NAEP scores have put us in the spotlight. We get no data from NAEP. My daughter took NAEP years ago and I have no idea how she did. I do not get school-wide scores. And I have, yeah, I have no idea how we did four years ago or five years ago. MAP, much more important. We get to see how, yeah, we get to see how kids are growing. And it provides us more detailed information that we can actually use to help our instruction.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Gillum as to how this all is impacting from the committee angle.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you restate the question?
So you represent the academic. So I'd like to hear how all this is impacting that.
How all of what is impacting?
The restrictions and the things that the principals just shared with us.
So just, just as, you know, Dr. Meyer comes and presents a proposed budget to, to the board, Mr. Decker, you know, presents a proposed budget for, for our school to, to our APC. We're just a, we're just a small school board for the school. When the current budget cycle came through with the current, or with the earliest projections of what, you know, what's, you know, school funding would look like for this year, Mr. Decker put together, essentially, he gave us three, three options based on some, what's we're looking for? Projections or?
The proposed budget.
In the proposed budget. One was in keeping class sizes at 22, our status quo. And essentially, even if we cut every single SAS contract, which would include our archery club, our running club, our cross-country skiing club, I think debate as well. Debate was, so things that make Watershed, Watershed. And cutting our supply budget in half, cutting our, I believe, cutting, continuing, or, you call, I'm continuing to catch you, but you call it professional development, cutting that in half. We would still be, with those projections, would still be at, with the status quo, we'd still be in a budget deficit. We would still need to look at probably cut, cut staff. Running as lean as we possibly can, we would still be in a deficit. So essentially with those projections and we, he said, well, if we add a class, or sorry, a student each class made to our PTR 23, we'd at least be able to, it would increase our, increase our budget and we would be able to restore many of those things and give us enough money to maybe to hopefully hire a, another aide to help meet the, the requirements for the AK Reads Act. Essentially, as, as, as Mr. Decker said, current budget is unsustainable for Watershed, as is. Unless the BSA is increased, we will have to essentially change the vision of Watershed little by little in order to maintain it as a school.
Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
So with the Alaska Reads Act and the burden that it's put on your school, they talked about some sort of mentoring or aid that would come to your school. What does that look like to impact your school?
We do not have any extra aides or staff that have come from the Alaska Reads Act. And if, and I've seen numbers out there. I don't know how that, how that budget that's being proposed and, or how the, in the new House bill, I don't know how the extra money, I think, I forget what it is, like $180 per student for Alaska Reads. I don't even know how that transfers over to students. We are, we only receive money that comes from the BSA. So if you remember, last year, we were here saying, they get, they did the one-time funding and our students were counted for the one-time funding. But since the one-time funding wasn't a part of the BSA, we are here essentially asking for that money that our students were counted in to be shared with us. I think that was back in June or so. So I don't know what that money is. The burden of the Alaska Reads Act is that we have students that are in kindergarten through third grade. And I've wrapped in our fourth graders too because our fourth graders were first graders during the COVID lockdown and they need extra support still too. So all of those, you know, so all of those classes need small group instruction. And even if, even if a student is in second grade and well below, there's a difference between some well below second graders and other well below second graders. And to give them the best instruction, we try to make those groups as small as possible. I teach two of those. I teach two of those groups. We find every human that is possible to help teach these groups. And, and so I don't have, there is no extra person or extra funding that has come because of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
This is a quick question, I hope, to Mr. Gillum. Would you, would you say, is it fair to say that an increase to the BSA does a lot for charter schools?
That would be an understatement.
Thank you.
So I'm going to put myself in the queue, and I plan to ask every one of the charters this question, so that you're aware. I very much believe in nothing about us without us, and there's been a lot said about you without you having an opportunity to weigh in, and we currently get to provide you that opportunity. As an Alaska public charter school, do you or your APC have any thoughts on the language in HB 392 around charter school authorization being given to the State Board of Education, and also the language creating a position to be added to deed to assist you and other charter schools, and how that might benefit or not serving your students and your families?
As I've shared with our legislators and the House Education Committee in my most recent public comment, I am a staunch advocate for local control of charter schools. I have been a part of the initial approval process of watershed back in 2008, 2009. I went through the 10-year renewal in 2019. I have experienced both the school board's scrutiny, vetting, and I've experienced that of the state. And I think that part of the reason why charter schools are being successful, and again, an aside, this is a pretty narrow definition of success if we're only going to use the NAEP, the NAEP assessment, and I won't go on about that much more. But charter schools are successful because we exist, because the community, because you represent the community, because the community says, yes, there's a need, and this, they are going to provide this different flavor of education that are, that we demand, that we want in our community. And then you do the work of vetting us and making sure that we are viable, and that we are going to live up to our promise. And then we do the, and we, as late as it is, and as long as they have to wait behind me, that we do this every single year, and we are accountable to you. And that accountability does not exist nearly to this degree at the state level. In both, in both our renewal and our original, that accountability does not compare at all to what, to what, to what you all put us through. I say that with love. I'll speak of that just a little bit as well. I have been part of the APC for several years now, and I was also involved in our renewal of our charter process as well. And being at number of these, the school board meetings and work sessions as representative for watershed over the years, I just feel it's better, you know, when we deal with it locally, to be quite honest with you. I mean, it, I feel, again, I, again, we have, I feel we have more scrutiny and more accountability at a local level as opposed to being, having this full state oversight. There already is state oversight for charters. And I feel that the system that is currently in place in Alaska is working. I'll leave it at that.
Just to follow, did you have any feelings on the position created at deed? Would that be a benefit or not for charters?
I think the most important thing right now is for the base student allocation to be increased, and I don't, I think that advocates for a smaller state government might want to reconsider that position.
I'm not seeing any further questions. Thank you so much for presenting to us and better informing our community about watershed charter school.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is FE Cochrane Charter Schools Annual Report.
Good evening, everybody. Figured I'd start with just an introduction, so give you some basics about who we are that couldn't be captured on that one page. So we are roughly 140 students, grade seven through 12. We're 85% Alaska Native students. We have 39 students enrolled in special education. We're the only charter school right now who leases our facility from the, from the school district. And I just kind of counted some rough numbers, and roughly 10% of our students are either in OCS custody or tribal foster care. So that's a snapshot. Oh, and finally, we are the only charter that's primarily middle school, high school, so unique in that sense. Very proud to say we are in our 19th year of existence this year and ramping up with the second charter renewal application, which will come before you all in much more detail next fall. And I think if I were to say one thing I'm most proud of after being, so I was a high school teacher at FE and then became the head teacher and then the principal, and I can speak confidently now and say, I believe we are a trusted school within the Fairbanks Native Community, and very, very much so. And that's probably one of the things I'm most proud of. It's pretty interesting with all the people who came before me tonight, so you heard a lot about strategic planning. We actually conducted strategic planning at FE last spring, which was a year-long process, including focus groups, extensive surveys, and then a day-long strategic planning session facilitated by the Goldstream Group. And out of that, we came up with really four primary strategic goals. I'm just going to read those out to you because I think they're really central to what we do now. Indigenous history and cultural practices are tied into the curriculum, allowing students to gain knowledge about their family and culture. Staff at FE will work to develop strong relationships with students and families. Staff work to personalize learning for each student based on their life circumstances and academic interests, and every student will leave FE with the skills they need to be self-sufficient, to be independent, and to pursue their life goals. And it felt like a very authentic process, and I really tried to work closely as we went through strategic planning to make this not a document that was going to sit on a shelf. That was like the most important thing to me of all. And so just to talk about some highlights that really came out through the focus groups and through a variety of, we actually did some additional focus groups this year along with surveys, and I think that overwhelmingly, I feel confident in saying that our families view FE as a place where students feel that we go to great lengths to meet their individual learning needs. We prioritize relationships in all facets of the school, and we celebrate Alaska Native culture. And I feel, again, like those are things that I'm very proud of us as a school accomplishing. I was speaking to somebody recently, we were talking about FE, and we actually have the Young Native Fiddlers Come, and they use FE among other organizations on Saturday. And I said, you know, I was thinking about it, and it's kind of like I'm trying to become like the JP Jones of the Native Community. And like, really, that kind of captured it. So we really are like connected to so many different community organizations, and I'll just name a few. Tannenau Chiefs Conference is a very close partner in multiple ways, but one of which is something called the TCC GO Program. We work with the UAF School of Management, and students take a Career Explorers Dual Credit Class. And what we've done with that is we've very intentionally targeted the students who don't necessarily stand out in terms of being accelerated or aimed at a kind of a college-focused program. And so we take risks with those students, and sometimes I'm not sure if that's the best way to go, but I feel like we're now in our second full year, maybe we're going on a third year of this, and I feel like we're starting to see the feedback from the students who graduated from FE. And I actually was just speaking with a student earlier today who did the TCC GO Program and is now finishing up her second semester in the Dental Assistance Program at the community college, and never would have approached going for something like that had she not experienced the TCC GO Program. We work really closely with Fairbanks Native Association. In fact, they were a partner in submitting the initial charter, and they fund a Family Services Coordinator. I think Jared, I can't really say it any better than Jared, we run extremely lean as well. And I'm guessing all charters will say the same thing. So I rely on our Family Services Coordinator. Among other things, she was actually provided with an SUV, and due to lack of transportation, which I will talk about, we transport multiple students every day in that manner. We work very closely with Doian, specifically with the Doian Languages, which is a kind of like a component of Doian Foundation, and we're now in our third year of offering Alaska Native Language class in partnership with Doian. We work with Alaska Department of Fish and Game and got back into having junior high do Hunter's Ed. Very excited. We partnered with Cook Inlet Tribal Council, and they just installed a Fab Lab, which is similar to a Makerspace, which is a real STEM-focused space with lots of different tools for creativity, in this case with a very specific focus on indigenous knowledge. And we're actually just getting that up and running. And something that really has been a powerful experience to watch, and if you attended the TCC Education Summit, you may have heard our students present about this. We had a grandfather come in last spring, and this individual, his name's Tom Huntington, and he essentially has revitalized the traditional method of brain tanning a moose hide. And he came in and, over the course of a couple weeks, the students and Tom tanned a moose hide, and that in and of itself was a very powerful experience. Well, this winter, we collaborated with Rural Student Services and harvested a cultural use permit moose in the winter, and that first cohort of students decided that they wanted to tan the second hide totally on their own. And so it's actually up on a frame, and they have gone through the initial process. I don't, I'm not going to get all the details here, but at the presentation at the TCC Ed Summit, I think this really speaks to kind of our, our place now in the community, these students presented about this process and what they had learned. There were five students entirely their presentation. The room was packed, and there was kind of choices where people could go. And by the time we got to that, the end of that presentation, there was multiple people crying in that audience because of the power for them in seeing young people learning something that was seen, you know, obviously this is a practical skill, but there's all these different elements in terms of the value of moose hide and the way it's gifted in different ceremonies and potlatches. And the pride that they felt and the importance they felt in now having something that they were going to be able to pass along was absolutely tangible in that room. And, and I was just really blown away by that experience. So those are some of the different partnerships. I, I too am a huge believer in the critical nature of literacy for students, and so I'm going to kind of swerve pretty big here. And I've been part of the secondary team that's working with CHAIN on the Alaska Reads Act, so I'm in my second year of that, and we've done a number of trainings, and I got to say, I'm all in on making that absolutely one of the most important priorities for us instructionally. And I'm proud to say that this year, we achieved one of my goals, which was to benchmark assess the entire school, and not just to do that, but we actually brought in subs, and I was able to release teachers because I wanted every subject area teacher to experience that process, to hear students. I just looked at the numbers, and so of our 19 seventh graders, two were reading at grade level, and the other 17 were at fourth or below in terms of their benchmark reading scores. So that's kids just coming into us, and the numbers stayed similar as you go up through the grades. But there's a unique challenge with a high school in particular, because high schools generally, and high school teachers don't generally, they see themselves as content area teachers primarily, and that's due to their education. And so it's a real shift, but I believe that we're up to it as a small charter school to start getting the science teacher and the math teacher and the social studies teacher to all see themselves as reading teachers. And it's going to take a lot of work, it's going to be a multi-year effort on our part, but I believe it's one of the biggest obstacles for students going forward in terms of having the, you know, the choices that I want them to have when they get through high school. And so we have contracted with the software company, which the district is now using, we're now in our second year of using Lexia, and really trying to find ways to take what's a fairly conventional high school schedule, and how do you address low readers within that and still run the school with their subject area classes, et cetera. But here's where I think charter schools are particularly important. We're small, and we're very, very focused, and so taking on a task like that is actually doable. It's not impossible to do that with a staff of, you know, 15 teachers and 140 students. It's not easy. I'll be the first one to tell you, and we haven't gotten as far as I hoped we would, but it's clearer than ever to me how important that is as a, as an area for us to place focus. So those are kind of, you know, I've touched on our community partnerships and the ways we work specifically with different organizations in the Native Community, but not just the Native Community, other entities. So I want to just kind of shift over to our challenges, and I think that I had to, like, Tim, you just came and visited with me, and we, we spent a lot of time talking about our challenges, and I think one of the things I appreciate about you is you try to shift the folk, keep shifting the focus back to the successes because you can get overwhelmed by the challenges. I would probably say at the top, you may be surprised with this, but I would say at the top of my list of challenges is something people in behavioral health know as aces, it's adverse childhood experiences. And essentially, that's trauma, you know, and that's experienced by students that could be recently, and it could be four or five years ago, right? But the, the ways that that impacts a young person's ability to focus and attend to, to school is profound. And so we're trying to address that in partnership with Fairbanks Native Association. We have clinicians who actually come to FE. We have our Family Services Coordinator. We have now a Natural Helpers Group, so we have a variety of methods. It's a huge challenge, and one that is not just fixed. But, you know, if I'm going to be honest But, you know, if I'm going to be honest with you, I would say that is at the top of the list because it's linked almost to everything else. So going down my list, I would say chronic absenteeism, another challenge. This is a really odd statistic. We are ranked the lowest of the district high schools in terms of daily attendance rate at 82%. Guess who's ranked the highest of the district middle schools? Effie. And I was like, what? That is such an interesting flip right there. Most of our 7th and 8th graders stay and go to high school. But chronic absenteeism has spiked since COVID, without question. And so I view that as a very significant challenge. Linked to that challenge is transportation. We lost busing right after COVID, I think when Durham had that first real shortage of drivers. Ryan has been absolutely super supportive and in trying in every way to help see how we can do this. Like Jared, I was very, very happy to hear the Durham presentation. I'm going to kind of reserve my optimism. But transportation has been really a very, very big obstacle, which affects, it affects the tardiness. It affects the chronic absenteeism. It affects our students who are McKinney-Vinta. You know, you just kind of go up and down the list. Another interesting one that I would rank as a challenge, and not totally sure what anybody would ever do with this, but it's what I term transiency. So we have a very high rate, I think, unlike the other charter schools. So I calculated right around 20% of our student population has moved out of the school over the course of this year, in one year. And that is due to a whole variety of circumstances. And we track it very closely. And that includes kids coming in as well. So there's a lot of movement, I think, unlike the other charter schools. We don't do a lottery. It just, the way families come to us doesn't happen. It essentially happens continuously over a 12-month cycle. So transiency, and then I think I put literacy, reading levels, as being one of the big, big challenges. But I, you know, I would have to say, overall, I am very, very proud of what we've accomplished. And a lot of those accomplishments feel kind of maybe a little less kind of data-focused and tangible in that sense. And I'm very optimistic about the future, actually. I'm very optimistic about us as a school. We have some interesting ideas in terms of things that we want to incorporate into this charter renewal application. I'm excited to work with Dr. Minert and the whole staff as we go through that process in the fall time. So the challenges are great, but the energy is there. And the school, I believe the school's thriving even under those circumstances. So I'd be happy to answer questions.
Move to extend to 10:30.
Second.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you for that presentation. And I've got two questions. One about the transiency and just a little elaboration on it. So you've had, like, here, 26 students have withdrawn.
Yep.
But you mentioned also then students coming in. So unlike maybe some of the other charter schools who kind of get full with their lottery, do you have a rolling enrollment?
Yes, yeah.
And is that, so making those adjustments for coming in?
Yeah, yeah, yep. And so I think that right now, if you if you have connections to rural Alaska, there continues to be movement in and out of rural areas. And it doesn't necess, I mean, there's some kind of like more predictable times, like families coming in if somebody's going to attend UAF. Or there's been a medical condition, and they're going to be so they can be close to Chief Andrew for a period of time. But generally, it is a rolling process, and it forces us to be kind of quick on our feet in terms of adjusting. And I would say right now, more often than not, people learn about us by word of mouth and by connections and their relations. And, you know, rural Alaska is a very interconnected place, as is in the Fairbanks Native community. And so people have lots of connections. And that's how people learn about us.
Ms. Maple?
I just wanted to thank you for presenting on all of this and sharing all of this information. I think perhaps the highlight of my brief board service so far has been the few schools that I've been able to visit and spend time with principals and learn more. And, you know, learning more about Effie and having the opportunity to talk with you is definitely one of the highlights of that service thus far. And I I just really appreciate that as you've, you know, shared with us, you know, started talking about statistics and speaking about everything that we've heard so far that you have also touched on some of the more nuanced ways that you, you know, are looking at your students and looking at outcomes. And that it's just far more complex than any graph or chart can really show. And yeah, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for your information. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Could you talk a little bit again about your, the atmosphere of Effie in terms of Alaska Native culture, your focus there? But also, and this stems out of part of our conversation, you've watched graduates. You're the only charter school with high school graduates. And you're small in your community. You've had a chance to watch graduates. And you have connections between alumni and students. I know you do some, you've got some displays that
Yeah, yeah.
But building on those relationships, both for the students within the school and those who have graduated and gone on. And some of the achievements you're seeing for those students, it's beyond any number. And you've mentioned some of the challenges. But talk about your group.
So it was actually interesting. Today, a group of six Norwegian educators, you know, this stuff's happening all the time. So UAF contacted us, they say, we've got these Norwegian visitors. They're ed program teachers in Norway. And they came down. And so we were visiting, and they're asking me questions about the school. And I said, you know, as I think about it, I think that the way, the primary way that I measure our success is in my interaction with our graduates. Like, that that's actually one of the most tangible things. One of the unique things is that our graduates stay in touch with us extensively in an informal manner. They come and go basically from the time they graduate. It's kind of like there's a free pass to come in. And they tell us how things are going. And they also ask for support and assistance and guidance as they continue. And what they're doing is everything from working on their four-year degree to being an apprentice in the Electricians Union. I was visiting recently, actually, I should have mentioned my APC president. Tanya Garnett is actually up in Arctic Village right now because it's Spring Carnival, and you got to go to Spring Carnival. But her niece is a graduate of ours, and she's the chief of Minnetonka right now. So she's the chief of the village. We've got a graduate who is a dentist at Chief Andrew Isaac right now. And somebody who's working on their nursing license. And so these people, you get these alumni constantly coming back, and they're telling you how things are going. And if I go back and I make a connection to, if I try to quantify how they were doing in school, it's not always consistent with how they're doing. In other words, they didn't necessarily make the honor roll. High school wasn't always this straight, smooth path. Their MAP scores weren't necessarily stellar. And yet, I love the measure I have, which is what they're doing now as young adults in the community. And so I would say that's, you know, that's one of the virtues of being in a high school is you can have that connection and you can measure it that way. But I think really, the culture, the vibe there is really one of, we're going to, we're going to meet you wherever you're at as a student and as a family and whatever conditions and challenges your family is facing right now. And that family may be very unique to what we would traditionally identify as a family that brings their kid into school. And we're going to go to great lengths to support you in your growth as a young person. And we're always going to, we're going to remain optimistic about what you're capable of, you know? And I think that just kind of like permeates. So.
Thank you.
You going to ask me the question?
I'm going to ask some other questions first. But I, as the president, have to kind of save it all up.
Okay.
Apologies, and some of our more statements. I really appreciate that you allow young Native Fiddlers to be in your school. My son participates in that program. And so I've really enjoyed spending my Saturdays at Effie while he practices. And just even this last weekend, you were putting on prom. And I watched one of your graduates because I attended your graduation last year.
Yeah.
They are, they're setting up prom. And that just speaks volumes to how connected those graduates still are. I don't think I returned back to my high school and volunteered until far later. But these were recent graduates from just last year, back giving back to their community. And like I said, more statements and my question. I was helping somebody do data research on charter schools recently. And one that we went through, so the district added Ashford, that just struck me is how different Effie is from many other charter schools is just this year alone, 69.5% of your students qualify as economically disadvantaged, which would be free and reduced lunch, that metric. And at any other school, that would most likely be a Title I school. And I don't believe that we do that for charters.
We don't do it for high schools in the district.
I, please.
Primary, isn't that true, Dr. Minert? Actually, you should answer that.
We do, I mean, we are the identifying authority. We haven't traditionally identified high schools.
Yeah, okay. And so that, yeah.
Is Lathrop?
We don't identify charters.
Yes, I know we don't identify charters.
And Lathrop is not.
No, I know. Yes, that was the thing. I think Lathrop is, though, currently considered a Title I, or no. We just do after-school program.
Yeah, they've got other federal programs there.
Got it. And this is like I was saying, pointing out the stark difference. That is very unique. There isn't another charter in Fairbanks with that level of economically disadvantaged students. And it speaks probably to why your charter faces the issues that it does in having students who attend or who have trouble getting attendance, who need transportation support. Because I, as a former Hunter teacher, that's almost the exact same level at Hunter Elementary School. And it's the same general population. So I really appreciate what your charter does to make a safe, welcoming environment for these students to attend a place-based high school and junior high program within our district. So like I said, more statement, and then to the question. And more broader for you, are there things other than transportation that we could do to help enable your mission? I remember last year, you came and talked to us. And I believe you said you couldn't hire a 7th grade teacher or there was something with funding where you had to hold back from hiring. And I know, like, funding, we have to keep everything equitable. But how do you enable you and your mission?
I mean, honestly, I have to say that my work with district, different departments in the district is overwhelmingly supportive of what I'm trying to do. And so in, like, obviously, I'm going to be in the camp of increase the BSA. I've got, you know, kind of my backup plan, if things get leaner, would be I would cut more, right? So I would have to cut what little support staff that I have that help make other certified staff their jobs doable. And I think what you run the risk of is exactly what Jared talked about, which is we're running lean and people are stretched pretty thin. And you don't want to get stretched too far. So I think that transportation would really just sit there as kind of the place, the starting point. And again, I know, like, Ryan has been, he's gone through the numbers. Like, there's no kind of conspiracy here. And I'll be very clear. It is absolutely a question of drivers and routes and what's doable. So I look forward to that hopefully being a change next year.
I would hope we're able to do that for you as well. So then that leads to the question that you knew was coming. Do you have thoughts or opinions on charter school authorization in legislation or having a position within DED if that would be helpful?
I actually have an APC meeting tomorrow. So I'm going to kind of defer really strong opinion about this. What I can say is when I reached out to DED as kind of an initial, hey, our charter renewal's coming up, and I just wanted to say hello and kind of make contact, the secretary in the office was really, really nice and helpful. And it went like, huh, I'm not really sure who's got charters right now. Like, let me put you on hold. And so I got put on hold, and then five minutes later. You still there? I'm still trying to figure out who's got this. Let me put you back on hold. And literally about fif, and I'm just going to tell you how it went. Like, 15 minutes later, she's like, okay, I think I figured out who's doing this. And they connect me to this, to this office. And the woman introduces herself, and she's very nice. And she goes, well, like, I got to be honest with you. I just learned five minutes ago that I'm going to be the new person on charter renewals. And I look forward to learning about the process as we go through it together. And that was not really confidence-inducing in terms of them being ready to, you know? So anyhow, that's, that was my experience. I'm, you know, we'll see, we'll see where this stuff goes. We actually did NAEP this year. Jared talked about NAEP. I feel like I get, NAEP is like jury duty. I get it every other year. And the people are generally really, really nice. And you bring them in, and you've got all these different things you've got to do to get ready for it online and stuff. And then it happens, and then they leave. And you're like, you don't know anything about it. So again, I don't know what this NAEP statistic that's driving this. But I imagine that we, as an APC, if I were to just project forward, I'm fairly confident we will come out, as are the other APCs, very firmly in the favor of local control. But, you know, wait till the meeting tomorrow.
I think that's all the questions. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And certainly, a couple of you have come out to Effie, and I'd welcome anybody else to come out. We love to have visitors.
And at this time, we'll take just a five-minute recess. Come back about 10:06, at 7:00. We are back from our recess. The next item on our agenda is the Discovery Peak Charter School Annual Report. And I believe I have, did you want to do that now, Mr. Doran? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm Nathan Pitt, I'm principal. And I have Christopher Smades, our APC president, here with me. I think we can keep under our 10 minutes. We're both very new. Mr. Smades started in the president position, I think, in January. And this is my first year at Discovery Peak Charter School. I always like to start with our mission, and it's in the smallest font at the bottom of my document, but I think the most important. "The mission of Discovery Peak is to develop intellectually curious and capable young people who aspire to be ethical and compassionate leaders in their community." It's one of the things that draw me, drew me to this, this school and this position, was that beautiful mission. And that's what we, that's what we're trying to do every day with our students in our building. And on the header, I just listed, I kind of shrunk down our, what we consider our three pillars. So I said, "Community, Learning, Movement." To extrapolate that out a little bit, we have Community Connections. We have Individualized Learning. And we have Increased and Intentional Movement. That's what, that's kind of the founding of our school. For Community Connections, we're always trying to connect, well, of course, with our parents. We have a strong volunteer base with our parents, but also really trying to reach out beyond that to organizations in the community, involve them in what we're doing, bringing them into the school, and then also getting out into the community. So, and mentioned different ways that we do that. One, one thing I'll highlight is our, and this also connects to our, our movement piece. Quarterly, we have Dino Data Days. And so for that, we, we take all K-8 students, we're a K-8 school, and we lump them into several different groups. So you'll have a group that's K-38 students, and they'll travel around to different activities where we've got a, we've got a mile run. So everybody runs a mile. We've, we've got push-ups, mostly focused on movement. We also have some time where they're reflecting, those groups, those K groups, work together to reflect on explorations that they did in the last quarter. Highlight our explorations a little bit, too. Where we have, we use our clusters, so K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Those groups, we mix up. And, and so every, every day, our students are, that's kind of where we get our social studies and science as kind of core, but then we're mixing in other content areas as well. We've, we've focused on really trying to expand that so that it's, it's, we use the term "universal design." So it's more accessible to every student in that it's wide. So you've got projects, so that students that may be struggling with the content can still access it. Students that are really ready for the next step, they can do that, too, because it's a project. It's not just lockstep. So we really get to do that in those explorations. We're really working on doing that in all content areas as well. Let's see, let me highlight, our enrollment, we talked about class, class size. We're also, in our charter, we're set for 22 students. That's, that's how we're designed. Our building was designed around that, too. We have relatively small classrooms that are designed for 22 students. We, we use the rest of our building, purpose-built. We have wide-open spaces where we go out. We have K-8 groups that are working out there. We might have just a class that's out in that, in that area. So that they're not just always contained in that, in that relatively small classroom. We've already talked kind of about classroom sizes. If we expand that, we add a student or a student. It's not very long before we're, we're even, we have a hard time being in our space, like, we're the physical bounds of it. So I'd highlight that. We, another way that we help make sure that we are individualizing learning for our students is, is the small groups and class sizes. We also have tutors dedicated to each cluster. So we have a design where we've got tutors working with large groups of students and rotating. So when we talk about tighter budgets, there's, there's nowhere to pull. There's really nowhere to, this, we changed the design of what we have so far, if we, if you even take one person out of the mix. We do run, you've heard us say, we run pretty lean, we run pretty lean. With that, I'll open that up for questions. Any clarifications?
Mr. Doran?
Thank you for, both of you for coming tonight. You mentioned movement, and you talked about some of the movement activities that you do. But could you talk a little bit, because that's your focus? One of, one of your primary focuses of Discovery Peak is movement. Could you talk about that integration, what it does in creating that learning environment and that, that living environment within your school? What it does to enhance that?
So just, just anecdotally, I'll share that it's taken me several months to get used to the, our building is kind of noisy, because there is a lot of movement in those open spaces. So there's, there's almost always someone using one of those large open spaces for some kind of movement. So you'll go out, and the seventh and eighth graders are doing, they're learning kickboxing. And that's more of a PE-focused. We have students that are getting, we, they're getting outside as much as they can, especially in these days when it's warm, even for a short break, just to break things up. We have a lot of short movement in the classroom just to break, to shift from one, one content area to another. I have a little movement break. I also have staff, at staff meetings, share how they're actually integrating movement into instruction. So stories, and then staff start listening and going, "Oh, I'm gonna do that, too." Stories about using vocabulary balls that they throw around in our building with, say, prefixes, and I'm just kind of glossing over it. But, but in even our core content classes, really trying to leverage, like, have the kids move. And then also, just that pure making sure that they're moving so that their brains are working. But there's a lot of research around getting that exercise and keeping a healthy brain. And so we, we value that as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from bar members? I guess that just leaves the one you know is coming. How do you feel about state authorization of charter schools as part of HB 392, and then also the charter school language adding a position in DEED?
So I've, I've had similar experiences. It's already been shared with, with the state. The state's always really helpful, right? Whenever, whenever I call, I get to what, what I need, so no complaints there. But there, with charter schools specifically, I don't see that same level of support right, right now. But I haven't needed that too much, because we, we have so much support with the district. And so this is something I think that, I don't think it's being talked about, because I don't know that people are really thinking about it. But, but the cost of having a school like ours that runs very lean, there are all of these other costs that, that, whether it's their human resources. So I, I get help with recruiting from the Human Resources Department. I don't run payroll. All of these services that come through the school district would cost a lot. We benefit a ton from being part of a well-functioning school district. And anytime I need anything from, from the district office, no complaints there either. I mean, I get the help that I need. So I think, I don't think that that's factored in, really, when people are talking about it. It's just kind of an idea. And it may look different in different districts. I know in our district, I'm so grateful to be part of a high-functioning district that can help me get, and I've worked a lot of other places. Also, high-functioning, but I know how different districts and organizations work.
I think that exhausts our questions. Thank you both so much for coming and telling us more about Discovery Peak.
Thank you. Move to extended 10:45, or just to finish comments?
Second. The next item is Chinook Monastery Charter School's Annual Report.
Hi, I am Christina Carlson. I'm the head teacher at Chinook. And this is Greg Foster, our APC chair. Good evening. I'm thrilled to share a brief update on Chinook's productive year. Thanks to the dedication of our student staff and especially our parent community, we've achieved a lot. Many volunteer hours have been tracked. We successfully implemented, using the UFLI curriculum, integrated with our Montessori method, K through 3, and have seen great results. Our intermediate students practiced interpersonal skills through cooperative groups, STEM groups, quilting, gratitude circles. Our middle school students serve their community at home and abroad in Costa Rica. They worked at the food bank, the Fairbanks Mission, and a variety of places in Costa Rica. Greg will give an update from the APC, short.
What are the APC things?
One of the things we're proud about, the Chinook community, is the involvement of our parents. We would not be as successful as we are without the involvement of each and every parent. And not only in their child's education, but in helping out the community that is Chinook. We have opened ourselves with the open APC meeting every month. In addition to that, we have the All-School Letter. And on top of that, we have a all-school meeting at the beginning of every trimester, where all the families can come in, share meals, and we cover the various topics, the challenges, the academic challenges, and the road that has proven successful for previous families. You have both new families, along with the last-year families, sharing growth and experience in what they have been through at the Chinook Montessori. So that's something we're very proud of. We are all lean. We, we have all hit on that, but we would not be as successful as we are without those parents contributing.
Looking forward for next year, this week we offered 15 spots for new students to join us next year. Kindergarten, a couple mixed in first and third, and some seventh grade positions. Next year, enrollment will be about 154 students and we still continue. It's been a work in progress, but COVID kind of put it on pause. We want to add another intermediate classroom. So it's still on pause, still working on it, hopeful. Our budget is balanced for next year, but only because we're going to dip into our savings and hitting it again bare bones. In the past few years, we've cut support staff positions, so it's, yeah, it's hard. It's busy. It's a busy day. We too hope for a BSA increase. We hope it doesn't come as one-time funding and if it does, we hope to be included and receive that funding. And we are happy with the system in place that is currently, we come to the local school board and say, hey, this is our charter, this is, we want to renew it. And then it goes to the state after you approve it. And a dedicated person at the state would be just fine. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Doran.
Similar to what I've been asking is, could you just talk and give us a little flavor of the Montessori perspective, how it plays out in your building and adds to the relationships and the learning that happens there? So a little bit about what Montessori is.
Yeah, at our school especially, it's a heavy emphasis on communication and parent involvement. We couldn't educate without parent involvement, nurturing, teaching children to be responsible and respectful, using hands-on materials, working in small groups. And we want our students to be connected to the community. So out in the community, field trips, learning, learning from parents, learning from people to come in as experts.
Follow. Okay. Could you summarize just a little bit what Montessori approach is? And then also, I know you've worked hard for each staff to be trained in it and just where you are with that professional development?
Yeah, so we've all been trained in the Montessori method. Some of us still need to do some training in it, a deeper training. I don't have like a one-sentence Montessori, sorry, I don't right now.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Burnett.
Thank you guys for being here. I just want to say how impressive I find it that you have logged so many parental volunteer hours in your school. Can you elaborate just on some of the things that you have families doing and how they are contributing to those volunteer hours?
We have parents that bring our recycling, take-home jobs, laminating, cutting, parents going on field trips, donating time or money. One parent, I left my room for five minutes today and I came back to six new volleyballs on my table. Just, I have a list going in our all-school letter, like, these are the needs that we need and they, yeah, they get met. We have a grandparent that fixed our toilet. So it's just, yeah, we couldn't run our school without them.
We're, we're appreciative for, for families that have the availability to donate as much time as they do. And not everybody's in that same boat, but when we have the all-school meeting and we bring families together, we give avenues where maybe they did not consider or were not aware. Studios, one example, if a parent possesses an artistic skill, maybe painting, some craft, pottery, something of that nature, they can set up a studio with prior approval, open it up to students and give them another pathway for learning that wasn't there previously. And so it, it could be something as simple as assisting in the class to being a transportation, which we do not have for field trips, and participating and being a mentor and chaperone with those field trips to setting up studios, being involved in the APC. There are numerous ways and that's really just the education of the parents. We know our success is by the involvement on the, on a parent with their child's learning, but it's just more than that. Their involvement, they can take one child to a field trip, but they also have the ability to take four other children in their car to facilitate that field trip. So that's just one example of how it's more than just one, it's the community.
I just want to add one other thing to that is that we ask parents to volunteer 45 hours over the course of the year. It's just something that's been in place for the whole time Chinook's been around, which is almost 30 years. But we're, we're not kicking anyone out if they can't meet those needs or if they don't track hours. And sometimes that's life. You can't help at the school this year, but you helped last year and it's just life.
I think that's all the questions. I just want to point out that, one, your one-pager is absolutely adorable. You did great work. And two, for the community, if anyone's still listening at this late hour, that you are Alaska's first and oldest charter school and Fairbanks is a leader in charter education and we really appreciate all the work that you have done to make Chinook Montessori such a great option for Fairbanks students.
Thanks. It's a good partnership.
Oh, wait, Ms. Sanderson.
Oh, I just want to thank you for your dedication and work that you are providing our, our community with. Also, students have an effort way to be educated, different pathway. And one of the original founders, Janelle Dacher, her mom, I'm often in contact with her and I'm, I often tell her, yeah, that school's still thriving, still turning out and supporting students' learning and, you know, they're still growing and doing wonderful things. So it's always pretty cool for them to hear that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And the next item is Boreal Sun Charter School's annual report.
Good evening. My bedtime reminder went off about 45 minutes ago. So my name is Stacy Foshee and I'm the principal of Boreal Sun Charter School.
I'm Sharon Hansen. I'm on the academic policy committee, serving as the historian. I'm also the chair of the Friends of Boreal Sun, the nonprofit that's associated with the school.
So we're here tonight to tell you a little bit about Boreal Sun. And first, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to the board members for staying up late nights to listening to all the testimony and also making those really tough decisions because I know you've faced, been faced with a lot of those recently. And I just want to say thank you. I know that's been hard. So on my one-pager, I provided some statistics about enrollment. So 188 students enrolled in Boreal Sun, 60 new students enrolled through the lottery last year, and 68% of our students returned from the 2022-2022-3 school year. So some of our notable achievements or accomplishments that you might have seen were our math counts team. This was their very first year to have a math counts team at Boreal Sun and they won second place at regionals and third place in the state competition. Two students took first and second place in individuals at regionals and one took sixth at state. We're very thankful for our coaches for, for helping out with that. This year, students in all grades have taken responsibility for cleaning their classroom after school. So they sweep the classroom, wipe down all the tables and benches. That's really helped us out a lot with custodial needs. Staff implemented a successful reading intervention program in grades K through five. So like you've heard from some of the other charter schools, the students in fourth grade were in COVID during those formative years and we wanted to include them in our intervention program this year. Forty-eight students entered pieces in Up with Art this year. Seven of those students were award winners and one middle school student received the best in 3D. Our APC hosted an all-school meeting where staff families and our nonprofit, parent groups, they all explored the seven Waldorf principles and gave input on those. Then the staff has since given input on those and we're going to choose one of those to focus on this next year. And then I'll let Mrs. Hansen talk about the Battle of the Books this year.
I was the school coordinator for Battle of the Books at Boreal Sun and two of our teams took second place in the district and I was quite proud of them. I think what I'm most proud of is that our Battle of the Books students aren't necessarily our top readers. Our school has focused to make Battle of the Books for everyone. One other highlight of that was a book that we read, this was last year. It was a, a book about a young girl that was born without any arms. So the Battle of the Books students were out on the playground, playing games and doing different activities without using their arms. So they were integrating that into their, their own lives and seeing the world through a different lens.
Some other highlights from Boreal Sun include, we hosted our second spelling theme, we rejoined the Alliance for Public Waldorf Education. The staff and the APC and the PCG were engaged in exploring those principles even further. Two former long-term subs this year went back to school to become teachers, so they'll graduate soon. I think that's something that we, we encouraged along the way for them to go back to school. We hosted a couple of playground cleanup days because like watershed, ours is a big mud puddle right now. But in the fall, we were able to paint and a parent built a brand-new kitchen for our playground, little mud kitchen. Yeah. We also have spent many hours knitting, singing songs, skiing. And right now, if you come to our school and visit, there will be all kinds of props. Students practicing for their plays, running their lines with each other, and the school is just filled with students getting ready for skits, plays, and theatrical productions. All right. A little more information about our, the REEDS Act and how that's been implemented at Boreal Sun. So new to our students this year and our teachers and our entire staff has been adding reading interventions. So we took pretty much everybody in the building at a certain time to come and participate in that. And that has required and taken a lot out of our staff because it's been really difficult this year, but our students have really grown. So 85% of the students who made, made an average or well-above-average growth and 35% of our students made below-average or well-below-average growth. So for those 35% of students who did make the below-average or well-below-average growth, we brainstormed as a staff, some of the things that we could do in order to support those families. We contacted families about tutoring opportunities and many of our families chose to join varsity tutoring this spring and there's been mixed reviews about that. Sometimes they say they have been amazing and their students have really enjoyed that and it seems to depend a lot on the tutor that they get. We also invited our families to come in for student support team meetings to brainstorm more ways to support their children. And then each of our staff members usually host quarterly parent evenings. And so a lot of the, I know Mrs. Hansen just attended one with her children, so she might want to talk a little bit about that. But the teachers are telling families how they can help their children at home with reading as well. Want to talk?
Sure. Yeah, our parent evening, it was actually sort of like being back in school again. We sat in the chairs and she gave a lesson as she would have given it to our first-grade students. So for example, the word cat, you would break it down into k-a-t. It was a little more in-depth than that, but just to give an example of integrating the families into the learning process.
Our library is up and running this year. It's hosted entirely by volunteers, so volunteers check in the books, our teachers check out the books, but we have quite a library collection that we're very proud of and students are excited to be able to check out books. And it's especially been wonderful since, you know, our, our pub library is in flux right now. So that's one of the things that is a highlight for Boreal Sun as well. At the bottom of the one-pager, you can see that our school runs on volunteer hours and that is absolutely true. So 2,886 hours logged so far. They do everything from plowing our areas around the school to fixing bathroom fixtures and toilets, replacing batteries in our sensors for our, our sinks. We had a hole in our wall in the great hall, so somebody came in and fixed the drywall there. So just so many things that our volunteers do. We couldn't do it without them. They also come in and, and knit with our students, host our middle school students, our seventh graders in the morning so that they can be in the great hall, just go on field trips, host festivals, are on the APC or our nonprofit organization. So yeah, I think that about sums it up. And then we also have an invitation for the board.
So the Friends of Boreal Sun, to thank all of our parents at Boreal Sun for all of their volunteer hours, is hosting a skating event and we would love for board members to come with their families. If you don't want to skate, you can come and walk around at the upside, the upstairs at the Big Dipper, 3:30 to 4:30 on Friday. Would love to see you there. Looking at you, Melissa.
And we'd like to thank all the board members that have been able to make it out to Boreal Sun. And if you haven't been able to make it this year, we hope to see you next year or anytime that you're available, we would love for you to come and see what our school's all about.
Yes, thank you for your report. And so I have a quick question about the damages that you guys had with water and some other situations. Can you give me a little bit of an update on what's going on with your building?
Absolutely. So when you came, probably last summer, is that when you? Yeah. So last spring, we had water coming down the building. On the weekend, our superintendent came over to see what was going on. We were a little worried, is it safe to host school? And we worked with our landlord, so it took a lot of hours this summer and I had a lot of help and support from people in our community. And we sat down with our landlord and we said, here are our demands and here are the things that we need. And luckily, he said, yes, we can do that. So over the summer, they pulled out all the carpet and replaced all the carpet with brand-new flooring. They also fixed the back door that had a lock issue and a host of other things. This year, we have another list of things that we need for them to step up and also do. So along the lines of would we like someone at Deed to be that specific person, also written into that law is access. Also written into that law is access to an attorney. And that is something that we definitely want. Because if, if the landlord hadn't stepped up and done the right thing, it would have been, it would have been a time when we would have needed legal counsel.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Doran?
The elevator speech version of Waldorf lens.
I was waiting for it, I was waiting for it.
And how it permeates your school. And so, so that Waldorf lens, what, what that is, how you would describe that and how it permeates the learning and life of your school.
Absolutely.
Move to extend to 11:00 PM.
Boreal Sun Charter School provides K through eighth grade students with a cross-curricular arts integrated program inspired by Waldorf education. Boreal Sun students receive lessons in music, Spanish, art, and drama, with all students enjoying a strong emphasis on getting outdoors. The school year is marked with seasonal and multicultural celebrations. A strong sense of community is fostered and family involvement celebrated. Waldorf in general, you speak to the whole child and there's a head-to-head approach to their educational model.
Thank you. Sorry.
Ms. Doran and Ms. Burnett?
Just to follow up, and how is professional development training for your staff going?
Oh yeah, that's, that's a great question. So FOB, our nonprofit, is the entity that hosts all of our teachers to be able to go to professional development. It usually is then in the summer on their own time, but they give that freely. And three teachers have applied. I think they are going to receive
Thirteen fifty.
Of thirteen fifty in order to put towards their trip to go down to, I think they're going to Denver to a conference there. And then throughout the year, we've hosted different folks to come in and do training at our building. And we're working with the, the Anchorage and the Wasilla Waldorf Schools so that we can build a partnership there and be able to at least pick up the phone and have a colleague that teaches your same grade and you can ask them questions and get some information, just share ideas, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
Just real quick, you, you called me out and hit me on my weak spot. So if you could just email me that information on the skate, that'd be great.
Awesome. We'll send you the flyer.
Thank you.
We'll send it to the whole board.
I think the only part of my question that wasn't addressed is how you feel about the language around charter school authorization and then if you or the APC has taken any other actions.
Well, I think maybe she slightly touched on that when our building was flooding, Dr. Minor came in. Do you want to continue the answer there?
Yeah, so the APC had a special meeting on
That was last night?
Yeah, last night. And decided that yes, we want to move forward with a letter to the governor and to the legislature to talk about some of the issues like the funding, the one-time funding. What else was listed in there?
It's so late.
Too late. Anyway, yes, we're moving forward with that. And then I would say we definitely need the support of our school district. We rely on them so much for so many things, technology, from technology to hiring practice to, to many of the things that other charter schools highlighted here tonight. So absolutely, I think we, we want to keep it local because these are the stakeholders here that care so much about our schools and make sure that our schools run and function just like we want them to, so.
I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you so much for coming and informing us about Boreal Sun.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We are going to postpone item number nine, the policy 804, until our next regular meeting, which brings us to board and superintendent comments. We'll start with Ms. Burnett.
Oh goodness, thank you. Of course I would move my page. Okay, I found it. So I just want to start the comments off first as a reminder, parental engagement next Wednesday, right here in the boardroom at 5:30. We'll be going over a Safe Storage Resolution with Ms. Marotti, hopefully she can make it. And also going over different ways to interact with best homeschool and our course, with our main correspondence program and our families there and also how to communicate with outside families and trying to learn how to be a little bit more competitive in the engagement field when it comes to best homeschool. So I look forward to next week's meeting. I also look forward to going down to ASB this weekend for the Spring Wardsmanship Academy. I'll also be joining in on the review, policy review session on Friday for the trauma-informed schools. And so that should be a good weekend. Mr. Doran and Ms. Anderson will also be joining down there. And so I look forward to that and just thank you everybody for being here tonight and we'll see you at the next one.
Ms. Maple? Nope, she's okay. Mr. Burgess?
I'll keep it brief, given the late hour and the fact that I'm probably not at my most articulate or eloquent. I just wanted to highlight the fact that all of our charter schools tonight said that they support an increase in the BSA and that it would do a lot for them, which is contrary to statements that we've heard from the governor's office and certain legislatures, certain legislators. So everyone keep that in mind as we continue our advocacy efforts. An increase to the BSA helps all of us, including our high-performing charter schools. Thanks.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Say a thank you to board president and the administration superintendent for giving the charter school reports separate from the contract conversation that we'll have later. I think this makes it much more valuable and I really appreciate that change that has taken place here. I was able to attend most of the Tenonah Chiefs Conference Education Summit that was held last week. A lot of it is being a listener and hearing, but one of the things that stood out to me is several board members from around the Tenonah Chiefs area, area, region mentioned a concern of having to close schools. They're considering that, they're facing that, you know, for different reasons or a variety of reasons, not all of them that we're looking at, but, but some of it very similar. And I thought, isn't that an interesting similarity? You don't think of that for rural areas as well as what we're facing and, and other districts. But it was very good and I want to thank Tenonah Chiefs for having that annual summit. I'm very cognizant of budget and as we heard, the borough won't be making their decision on local contribution until the end of May. I anticipate it will be the end of June before we actually know what we're getting from the state by the time the legislature finishes and the governor decides what he's going to do with it. But I think it's extremely important now that we enter into conversations about what our additions and/or reductions might be. And I use particularly the word additions rather than add-backs just because, you know, we need to be prepared. But there might be some room for innovation as well. And so it's beyond just adding back something, what, should we do something else? And can we do other things as well as reduction? So we're not coming down to the last minute in June and then trying to scramble that. So I think it is on your radar, but I just want to make sure that that conversation happens sooner rather than later. I also want to say I really appreciate bringing the strategic planning topic forward. It is early where it needs to be, it needs to happen now and that conversation's starting. I do really look forward to really having a broad board conversation and being able to ask the questions that we need to for an understanding of their process and providing the guidance that'll be important from the board for that. And lastly, I just want to say our teachers and students are impressive. I've been able to go into a number of schools and, you know, it's, and settings and see different things that are happening. I just want to highlight a couple of them, you know, the responsiveness from staff to students. I stopped into a class, they were doing geologic timelines and working in little teams. And I stopped and I asked one group, you know, one of the groups, explain to me what you're doing. And one of the students started right out telling me, the teacher just quietly came by and just said, he just came from Mexico last week. And he did a really good job presenting himself and his partners. But what really struck me is the teacher was very quiet in terms of it. He spoke in English because he wanted to. But when I looked down, she had been thoughtful enough to have not only the English instructions for their project that everybody had, she had done a Spanish translation just in case he needed that kind of checks, checkpoint. And just very quietly. You know, in responsiveness of students to students. I had two opportunities, watching students making quilts for the older students and just the sense of what was reinforced them, they weren't making the quilts for themselves. They had to think who they were making them for. And, and that caring, and I was at the Help to Usher at the concert on Monday with a, one of the school performances, again, a partnership for Banks Arts Association, for Banks Concert Association. But I watched a student as the band group was playing and the kids were clapping. He reached over and just encouraged a fellow student to clap. He didn't hover or anything, just kind of was that encouraging. It was a really tender moment. I wanted to do a shout-out to the principals, you know, as they've talked about. They are very conversant about the curriculum and the, what's happening. I'm thinking particularly in the reading, but you know, this is K-12, different things that they've talked about, looking at data and trying to figure that out and showing, sharing their data boards and the progress, growth that students are making. And I think that's a piece we often forget that where the finished product is somewhere is out there. It's the growth that students and taking from where they are, where, how they come to us and where they can go that's there. And though I can give lots of other examples, the one I'm going to end with is there is an exhibit, special exhibit that's going to be opening next week, end of next week or so, at the Museum of the North University. It's Thinking Made Visible and it's about sketching and science and art with that. And what was so cool in the last two weeks is I saw a student who was sketching on her, free, some free time and doing an amazing sketch with detail and stuff. And I was able to say, oh, you need to go up and take a look at that when that opens. And so she was kind of interested in that. And then I went to, I was in a high school art class and I looked at some of their work that they were doing. I mean, you talk about talent, this is phenomenal. And I said, oh, you need to go to visit that exhibit. And they looked at me, kind of a little smile started and they said, yeah, some of our stuff is in there. So when, if you get a chance to go, I had a quick, was fortunate to get a quick preview today. But there is, there's sketching artwork, that Thinking Made Visible from current students and also graduates. Because there's a number of sketches from science students from West Valley. Actually, I know about it because my wife and she's, they, they're submitted. They're there, the talent that you will see as well as, you know, other science journals, et cetera, that are there. But it's just great to see our students being successful and being showcased among other professionals, et cetera. And it's quite a, quite a thing to see. So they are doing a very impressive job.
Mr. Lopez?
I'm just going to restate my first thing for the Purple Star Ceremony for the Fairbanks area on the 27th. It's happening at 10:00 AM, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, President Hardy. Well, I'd just like to start out by taking this opportunity to say thank you to a superintendent, the school board members and the community. Many of you know by now that I've lost my husband of 52 years. So I was totally prepared to have the procedure, you know, have some follow-up stuff and then, you know, come home and recoup and none of that happened. So it's been a journey, it's been a walk. Prior to losing my husband, you know, seven months prior to that, we had lost my 29-year-old grandson. I wanted to say that walking through this is, I mean, I'm sure you think that it's going to come eventually, but when it does come, I don't think you're ever really ready for it. But I, I think, I want to just thank everyone for every card, for every signature that was signed on any piece of paper that came to me and my family. My children, you know, they're all tagging me to see how I'm doing. I have good days and bad days, good moments and bad moments. And when I can look at those cards and I can, the flowers, just different things. I had somebody leave lasagna and garlic bread on the front porch. So people are just tagging me in different ways to show support. And I truly feel blessed to be a part of this community. I feel blessed to have people who really, my husband knew different people than me. He knew all the neighbors in our, in our neighborhood. I only knew a few of them. But, you know, to, to have the outpouring of love and support and the prayers, that's really what's given me courage to continue to finish out what I have to do and what I want to do, you know, because the students and staff and teachers in this district mean the world to me. By October, when I'm no longer sitting on this board, I will have 40 years in education in this community. And I have the community's support. I feel that, I feel the prayers, I feel the concern. And you know, Nikki hugged me tonight and she said, I'm just going to hug you, I'm not going to ask you anything. And, and that was probably all I could have handled. Because, you know, when I get the hugs or if I get too much conversation, I sort of fall apart. So I'm still trying to figure out what a norm, what a, a walk is going to be without somebody that I've known for 52 years. So I just want to take the moment to tell you thank you. My children know that I'm being supported in that way and that actually helps them cope to know that the community is such, that they don't care about your title or what you look like or anything like that. They just have really wrapped arms of support and love around me and it, it helps every day, it helps. But every day is a different day. And I was changed after the loss of my grandson, but I'm truly changed after the loss of my husband. But again, I'm going to finish out strong to support our students and to give, to be on board. And then when I'm not on this board, I will be searching out ways to help our students. I'll be searching out ways to still be I'll be searching out ways to still be supportive of education endeavors in our community because it's an awesome community. I'm grateful to live here, and people always ask me if I'm going to move. No, I'm not going to move, I'm going to stay here. But I just wanted to take this time to really tell all the staff, and, you know, when I looked out and I saw the superintendent and Erin and Karen and Brandy sitting in the service, my family asked, you know, "Who are those people?" And I could say, "Well, those are people I work with. Those are people that we've weathered some pretty tough storms, and they were there to support me." My kids looked at that, and they said, "Okay, Mom, we think you should, like, get off that board, but we know that's not going to happen until you're ready, but we're glad that you have people here in the community to support you when we can't be here." So, thank you so very much, and I just really appreciate it. I just want to tell you that. Thanks.
With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.